All right, folks, welcome to our council meeting of Tuesday, March the 2nd. We're getting ready to start, and hopefully this will be our last Zoom, exclusively Zoomed meeting, and then we'll get some sort of a hybrid for our next one, depending on council's level of comfort. So, the first order of business is the singing of "Oh, Canada", and I will read the bio, and then I'll ask everyone if you don't mind standing. So, the "Oh, Canada" singer for today is Emma McDonald, and she's done a pre-recorded version. Emma's nine years old, she goes to Mary Ward Catholic School. Emma loves to sing, she takes taekwondo as well. Her favorite subject at school is math, just like Counselor Peter Angelo, and she also loves painting, doing crafts, and reading. So, we'd like to thank Emma for her rendition of the National Anthem today. Awesome, wow, that was dynamite. Well, just in case Emma or her family is watching right now, congratulations, you did a terrific job, you really made us proud of the way you sang "Oh, Canada", so thanks so much, Emma. All right, moving along, our agenda, first order of business is the adoption of the minutes from our February 9th meeting. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange. There's no discussion, we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, that's approved, thank you for that. Disclosures of a pecuniary interest, do you have any disclosures? Yep, I've got Counselor Carrio, Strange, Peter Angelo, LaCoco.
Thank you, your worship, on the, an in-camera item, it was L202104, was a sale of a little piece of property, it's to a family member, and 6.2 PBD 202108, the council's looking at temporary zoning for patios. For restaurants, I have two restaurants, I may want to have them, so I'm in a conflict.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Strange?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I have check 443420 to myself for services.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship, check 443273 made out to myself for services, and also two checks made out to the Niagara Catholic District School Board, sorry, my employer, 00328-0036, and 00322-0004, and I've given those to the clerk already.
All right, thank you for that, Counselor Peter Angelo, Counselor LaCoco, and then Dubrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe I should have mentioned this on the adoption of minutes, on February, regarding the operating budget, I should have declared a conflict of interest for the fee for service for the grant for Niagara Falls Art Gallery, and the pecuniary interest that I have for tonight's meeting, two checks payable to myself, check 443640, January 27, 2021, for $122.12, second check, 443259, January 6, 2020, for $122.12, both for reimbursement of expenses, two checks payable to Niagara Falls Art Gallery, 00329-0037, February 1st, 2020, for $2,333.33, the second one, Niagara Falls Art Gallery, 00324-0036, December 30, 2020, for $2,333.33, and I also have a conflict of interest on 6.1, the transit station secondary plan, I own property in the area. Those are all of my conflicts, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Counselor Dubrowski?
Check 443323, and check 443238 for materials and services totaling $1795.16.
All right, thank you for that. Any other disclosures? And I have two checks written out to myself, 443620 and 443119, and please make sure that you do fill out the procedural notice, and/or can they email that to you, Mr. Clerk? Yeah, so you can, in light of the fact that you're not here, you can just email Mr. Mattson, and he will keep that on record as per the municipal act. So, thank you for those disclosures. So, moving on, don't go too far, the mayor's notes are very short, so they'll be quick. I know usually this is where, this is where Counselor Carrio goes and does his vacuuming, but this will be quick. Obituaries, Lynn Canham passed away, sister of Lydia Waters of our Business Development Department, and Maria St. Angelo, the grandmother of Nick Peter Angelo of our Transportation Department, so condolences go out to these members. One item I'd like to bring forward, and thank Counselor Peter Angelo and Strange for representing the city at the coldest night of the year, hopefully you guys didn't get too-too cold that night, that was, I think, last Saturday, so thank you very much for your participation in that. And lastly, for anyone watching right now, you'll see a lot of us on council are wearing these black t-shirts, these are Ludzie Strong t-shirts, number 29, and yeah, if you want to show your shirts, Counselor Dubrowski, that's great, everyone wants to show their shirt for people back home, you can see, I'll show mine as well, there's Ludzie Strong, we just want Steve Ludzik, one of our own, to realize that, you know, you razzled and dazzled us on the ice, you've always been a great ambassador for Niagara Falls, and we're all behind you 100% as you go through your struggles, and we know you're gonna do well, so I appreciate Counselor Strange for organizing this for us tonight, and I also want to point out that Counselor Campbell did, in fact, buy a shirt, he's just not wearing a shirt, but they didn't have all sizes, possibly, I'm not really sure, but I'm not, I shouldn't speculate, but I just want to point out that we're all very supportive of you, Steve, and of your family, and Mary Ann, and we just wish you all the best, so it's our way of doing that. So, we also did a group shot just before the council meeting, a picture of the screen, so that'll be available, and I'm guessing our Communications Department will send that out through our social media channels as well. So, thank you to everyone on council, everybody on council bought these shirts in support of Steve Ludzik, so thank you for all. The next council meeting will be Tuesday, March the 23rd. So now, Mr. Clerk, I know our planning portion of the meeting, I'm sorry, Counselor Strange, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just want to point, I just want to, on behalf of council, and I want to thank everyone for wearing their Ludzie Strong shirt, he's going through a really tough time right now, he's such a loved guy, and you know, he's been in the city since he moved here from Atobaco, I think, you know, in Niagara Falls Flyers Day, you know, and I remember my dad used to take me down there and watch him and Larmour on the same line, and great memories, and you know, him to go after that, get drafted, and end his career, and his whole career in Chicago Blackhawks, and you know, he's known for being such a legend on the ice, but I think he's gonna be even known more for the stuff he's doing off the ice, and he always comes to council every year for his Ludzie Rose, where he brings in so many famous players, and raises so, so much money for Parkinson's, he's a real hero, and he's really going through a really, really tough time right now, he's got some heart issues as well, he's gonna take care of that, but he needs a transplant as well, but he has to get healthy before he can get that transplant, so prayers and well wishes to him and his wife Mary Ann, his kid Steve, and Ryan, and grandkids, and I know they're, you know, we're all praying for him, and we love you, Ludzie, and if you're interested in getting a shirt, I can put that on our newsletter, I guess, and in an email through his friend Dan, they're selling these shirts, and all the profits go to Ludzie's Foundation for Parkinson's, so on behalf of council, you know, best wishes to Ludzie and his whole family in prayers.
That's awesome, thank you very much for that, Counselor Strange. So, Mr. Mattson, we've got six minutes until the planning, what do you recommend, did you want to do some other part of the meeting?
Yeah, I would suggest perhaps, you know, doing some guesswork here, it might take six or seven minutes or so, a little longer if needed, but before the planning public meeting, why don't we skip ahead to Communications, comments of the city clerk, which is items number nine, starting at 9.1, and we could go through that, and then when that's concluded, it'll likely be more than sufficient time to then start the planning public meeting.
Okay, sounds good. So, you guys gotta hear, I'm in chambers here with Bill, so I hear him twice, hi, there's an echo in the chamber, interesting. Okay, so we'll go to Communications and Comments, City Clerk, so item 9.1, the 2020 Fire Department Annual Report, the recommendation is council receive the report for information.
What are the recommendations, your worship?
Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Campbell, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, thank you for that. Item 9.2, correspondence from resident Melanie Home regarding women representation on council, I've got Counselor Ianone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Melanie for writing this in, I wasn't there that night, I was sick, but I was watching from home, and I didn't think you could hear me yelling at the screen from where y'all were, but the comment, do you really think women, like, are we gonna look at all our committees now to decide whether women should be on those two? My answer was yes, yes, you do, that's why we created committees with inclusion and equity, I mean, women breaking the glass ceiling is not anything new, we're not reinventing a wheel here. I didn't really like the answer Counselor LaCoco was given as to why you had to give your desire to be on that committee before that council meeting, that's not how I read it either, I thought at that council meeting you'd be able to say, I didn't realize it was picked already, and the people had been decided, and she didn't either, because we talked about it that day, so to me, it made sense, but it just, it makes sense, women should be in the room, if you have two women on council, a woman should be on the committee, on any given committee, so that there is a balance between male and female perspectives. Not new, we're not, we're not, this is why the region created, I think it's called, Jim, maybe you can correct me, a women's committee, a women, so even watching that process, men argued that they wanted to be on the committee, yet not one man joined it. You know, you can't have it only women, you just, you have to enjoy it, you have to include men too, that's how council voted, I watched all the men stand up and pound their chests, you know, it's not fair for it to be women only, yet not one man who pounded chests actually joined the women's committee. So, you've only got two of us, and I think our perspectives, like them or not, should be heard on at least each committee, so that's just, I couldn't believe in this day and age the comment, oh, you think we need women on all committees, yeah, I really do, and so do the women watching, by the way, and it's really hard to encourage women to run when that's the comments that they're watching from home, so I just wanted to put my perspective in there.
Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I also wanted to thank Melanie for providing us that information from Brock, I felt it was very valuable information specifically for the Niagara region, and it's really interesting to see what the makeup of our communities are, so thank you so much, Melanie, for giving us that information.
Okay, Counselor Carrio?
Thank you, your worship, I did take the time to read the gender representation in Niagara Governance Report, which is a very lengthy report, very good report, but as many other reports that are done with looking at it from one perspective only, when they went through some of the statistics on counselors, elected, men, women, and all the municipalities, they left out one significant fact, was how many ran. I think that in the future, that it should include how many run for the position as well, it's very important, because I think you'll find that the representation that the people choose to sit on the boards and commission, it sometime represents the amount of people that run, so if two women run instead of 40 or 50, like some of the men, obviously it's very difficult, and sometimes to do some things, but it should just say, how many people ran? It's the only statistic that's not in that 200-page report, very well done, but I think that statistic is also an important statistic, it may encourage more women to run, but there's not enough women running, that was my take on reading that report, your worship.
Thank you for that, Counselor Carrio, Counselor Ianone?
Yeah, and I read it too, not only did we read it, we live it, so you don't, you don't have to tell us, and maybe more women would run if they thought they had more say in the makeup of different committees, anybody just has to look at the screen to see the makeup of the difference between men to women just sitting on our council, and there was a lot of women that ran this past time then, so it wasn't just a shortage of women, so, I mean, to me, that's just, that's finding an excuse to justify as to why women think they need a place at the table, women always need a place at the table, and we need more women on a council.
Okay, oh, Counselor Campbell? You're muted, you're muted, Counselor Campbell?
Yes, thank you, your worship, if I remember correctly, the reason that we couldn't appoint another member, whether it be male or female, but it was, the intent would have been to appoint another member being a female, the appointment would have made it illegal for that committee to meet because it represented a majority of council.
Yep, Mr. Clerk, could you weigh in on that, please?
Through you, your worship, the counselor is correct, if we had kept the four parties that were, had expressed interest, and then also included Counselor LaCoco, that would have put us at quorum, which would have constituted a meeting of council.
Thank you, your worship, further to that, for what it's worth, there are nine, three more to be elected tonight to the Diversity and Inclusive Committee, seven of those nine members are female. Thank you.
That's great, thank you very much for that information, Counselor Campbell, I've got Counselor Ianone?
The easy solution to that would have been, hey, we've got four guys already sitting on it, does somebody want to step off so Counselor LaCoco can step on? That would have been really simple, and to hear, oh, you know, you gave your interest earlier, the conversation was in that council meeting, so it could have been changed by you, Jim, it could have been changed by any one of the guys who said, you know what, you're right, there's four guys on here, maybe a female perspective wouldn't be a bad idea, I'll step off, and the reason you have so many women on your inclusive, on that committee wing, is because women know that there needs to be a change, if any time in the last few years, women have learned there needs to be a change.
I've got counselor, oops, sorry, Counselor Campbell?
One more, one more thing, Mr. Mayor, were we not supposed to open this with a land acknowledgement?
Yeah, we're working on that, Counselor Ianone, we're not ready, and if you noticed at the region, they're not doing a land acknowledgement right now, because everybody's zooming in, so we are working on it.
For what it's worth, your worship?
Yes, Counselor Campbell?
We did not choose by gender who was gonna be on the committee, we chose by the value they're gonna bring to that committee, and as a matter of fact, there were so many good people, that's why I asked to jump from the initial membership of six, to change the numbers from minimum of five, maximum of nine. There were some really, really good people interviewed during that process, male and female.
Thank you, thank you for clearing that up. Counselor Dubrowski?
I think I'm still on the correct topic, and if anyone disagrees, just if I can help close the loop on this, I'm 100% positive that we were all offered an opportunity to express interest to sit on that hiring committee, and I believe there was three counselors who sent their interest in sitting on that committee through their experience and through their knowledge, and if anyone disagrees, please raise your hand, but I'm positive that we were all afforded the opportunity to sit on that committee, and this isn't about gender at this point, it was about who expressed interest to sit on that committee, and Counselor Ianone, somebody submitting their name and just assuming that somebody's sitting on a committee, that to make a quick decision like that at a council meeting, to put somebody on the spot like that, I don't think would be fair to say that, so either way, I'm fully positive that we were all afforded that chance to sit on that committee.
Thank you for that, Counselor, Counselor Ianone?
Well, we weren't afforded that in writing, because I had no email saying that, so if that was done in camera, I wasn't there, and wasn't afforded an opportunity, and thought that that night at council would have been when I could have done it, and nobody asked Counselor LaCoco what her experiences was, what her experiences, and it's vast, she's done CAO searches before, so to me, this whole discussion in trying to find a reason why, or justify why, is the reason, the reason we get ourselves into trouble, and you can shake your head, know all you want, but we were not, if you had the discussion amongst yourselves, if you wanted to show interest, that's great, but I wasn't there, so nobody offered me that, and Counselor LaCoco thought that because that report was on council that night, that's when we expressed our interest, and picking things on the fly, we do it all the time here, so that answer has, holds absolutely no water.
Okay, Counselor Dubrowski?
It wasn't an answer, it was a comment, I hope you don't feel that I feel I'm being questioned, maybe Counselor LaCoco would like to weigh in on that, but I'm pretty sure Counselor LaCoco, your memory will serve you correct as well, and I'd hate for Counselor Ianone to speak on your behalf, and I'd like you the opportunity to say a few words, if you'd like.
Counselor LaCoco, did you want to say anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as I said in the last meeting, I did not understand that we would be showing interest prior to the meeting, I thought we would be talking at the meeting, and if that's not what everyone else understood, I did apologize for that, but that was my understanding going into the meeting, and I do agree that if there was a misunderstanding, we could have taken it in a different direction, I do know that Counselor Peter Angelo brought up an idea about bringing on another person, and it was discussed that if we did bring on another person, it would be quorum, who I appreciate that, but it didn't go any further, and again, I really thought that we were talking about it at that meeting, I do apologize if that's not what I understood, and we have talked about other committees, but that was stated in writing to contact the clerk for different committees, so that is what I understood, and that's what I said at the last meeting as well.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Counselor, Counselor Thompson?
In the final analysis, the committee voted to have the entire council involved in the CAO selection, so nobody is being left out whatsoever, everybody on council will be making this decision with respect to the final probably six or eight candidates.
Okay, thank you for that. So, folks, we're looking for a motion to receive the information, someone want to make that motion? Motion by Counselor Strange, second by Counselor Dubrowski, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, so everyone's in favor. Thank you for that. Mr. Clerk, what do you recommend, do we finish off, or do we go to plan?
I would say, based on the time, there's no problem with switching back to now starting the planning public meeting, we can resume at item 9.3 later in the agenda when we get back to Communications again.
Okay, great, so, folks, we are going to go back to Part 6 of the agenda, the Planning Matters, so we'll give you a time to scroll back on your iPads or your computers or your pieces of paper, whatever you have, and I'll ask the city clerk if he would introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict, I'm not sure what's happening, if I go into a separate room, or I just mute myself and take my camera off?
Okay, Mr. Clerk, could you help us out with that, please?
Yeah, for the purpose of this Zoom meeting, through you, your worship, I would suggest that Counselor LaCoco could simply mute and turn off her video, and we can call upon you when we start the next item, 6.2, I will let you know that we do have a vast number of speakers at this point, roughly about 25, so it could take a while, but appreciate you declaring that conflict, and yeah, if you could just mute and turn off your video, that will satisfy the procedural bylaw where a discussion is taking place during which time a counselor has declared a conflict.
Thank you.
And then, Counselor LaCoco, maybe, did Sherry go, or Sherry went? Oh, there you are, I was gonna say, we gotta let her know when it's over, so could we call her, we'll call her? Okay, we'll call your cell phone, Counselor LaCoco, and let you know, so 25 speakers, I don't know, we'll see, hopefully that doesn't take too-too long, but we'll see. All right, so, Mr. Clerk, would you please introduce the next item on the agenda?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider city-initiated amendments to the city's zoning bylaw, notice was given by placing an advertisement in the Niagara Falls Review on Saturday, January 23, 2021, and by first-class mailing to all owners' land within 120 meters of the land to which the application applies. Anyone who wants notice of passing of the zoning bylaw amendment, or would like to preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal, shall give notice to the city clerk immediately after today's public meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, I now ask our Director of Planning, Mr. Hrlavich, if you would please explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment?
Your worship, it's Brian Dick, Manager of Policy Planning, in replacement of Mr. Hrlavich, but the purpose is to conduct a statutory public meeting to hear feedback on the zoning, transit area zoning amendment, so I will, if I may, I can begin the presentation.
Okay, Brian, you just have to, if you can give a little extra, I know you have your mask on, it's a little hard to hear you, so if you could just kinda, yeah, thank you.
My apologies, I'm replacing Mr. Hrlavich, so it's Brian Dick, Manager of Policy Planning here at the city, we're conducting a statutory public meeting under the Planning Act for the Transit Station Area Zoning Amendment, and if you may, I can begin the presentation. Thank you, the secondary plan for the Transit Station area was approved in 2018, otherwise known as OPA 125, following public consultation. The plan promotes transit supportive development, the creation of walkable neighborhoods with a mix of uses, a range of housing choices, and new employment opportunities. Next-
Next slide, please. Tonight's public meeting is being held to gather input from the public and council to be used to refine draft zoning, which will implement the secondary plan policies. The amendment has been initiated by the city with help from the region to implement the existing land use designations of the secondary plan. This area applies to the area bounded by Bridge Street to the north, Morrison Street to the south, River Road to the east, and Victoria Avenue to the west, currently zone central business in our zoning bylaw. An area bounded by Victoria Avenue, Morrison Street, Huron and Buckley Streets, which are designated mixed use in the secondary plan, are also included. What's not included is the area in north of Bridge Street, east of Victoria, which is purple, and currently designated industrial in our plan. Next slide, please. For the zoning amendment, all the zones will continue the permitted uses under the central business zone with the addition of vacation rental unit use within existing residential units upon receipt of an L P A decision that we're currently waiting. Also, it sets a maximum retail floor area of 930 square meters, 10,000 feet, in all zones to promote mixed uses. Ground floor residential uses would be permitted on the ground floor of properties within the C V two zone with the exception of properties on Queen and Park Streets between Ontario and Erie Avenue and the C V three and C V four zones. As well, the amendment adds new built form regulations and new definitions, and site-specific zones within the area are recognized and allowed to continue. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. In the C V one zone, it retains the four-story height restriction that we currently see along Queen Street. With respect to parking, none required for non-residential uses and apartment dwellings require a minimum of one space per unit. Next slide, please. In the C V two zone, the uses and provisions of the C V one zone apply plus the following: minimum front, rear, and exterior side yard depth of three meters, maximum exterior side yard of six meters, a maximum front depth of six meters, minimum lot frontage of 15 meters, and this is to encourage coordination and consolidation and maximum development opportunities, a minimum density of 50 units per hectare, minimum amenity space of 20 square meters per unit, maximum building length of 60 meters, of which 60% is glazing, minimum ground floor height of 4.5 meters, a mechanical setback of a minimum of three meters from the roof line or edge, and the inclusion of bicycle facilities. Next slide, please. In the C V three zone, the uses and provisions of the C V two zone apply plus the following: the minimum building height of nine meters and a maximum building height of 26 meters, minimum lot frontage of 20 meters to encourage, and this yet again, to encourage land consolidation and maximum development opportunities, as well as those previous permissions that I acknowledged earlier in the C V two zone, which is to the right of your, on the right side of the slide. Next slide, please. Next slide, oh, C V four, perfect, thank you. The uses and provisions of the C V two zone apply plus the following: a 10-story height restriction, minimum building height of nine meters and a maximum building height of 33 meters, minimum lot frontage of 30 meters to encourage land use consolidation and maximum development opportunities, a minimum building setback of three meters above the 12-meter height of a building, a minimum amenity space of 10 square meters per unit for the C V four one zone. Next slide, please. C V five. The uses and provisions of the C V two zone apply plus the following: minimum building height of nine meters and a maximum building height of 45 meters, minimum lot frontage of 40 meters, and this yet again to encourage land consolidation and maximum development, as well as the previous identifying permissions to the right of the slide. Next slide, please. The final zone would be known as C V six. And the uses and provisions of the C V two zone apply plus the following: minimum building height of nine meters and a maximum building height of 66 meters, minimum lot frontage of 50 meters, and this is yet again to encourage land consolidation and maximum development opportunities for the property. Next slide, please. So what you see here is a visualization produced that could show what the downtown could look like in the fullness of town with a long-term and a build-out scenario. And this could take, you know, the next, over the next 10 to 15 to 20 years. Next slide, please. As well, you'll see with the proposed zoning amendment, we've added new definitions. And for the saving time, I won't go through those. But you will see that they include a new definition for amenity area, bicycle locker, bicycle parking stall, and short-term bicycle parking space. Next slide, please. Also, with the proposed zoning amendment for bicycle facilities and regulations, we have half a stall per residential dwelling unit for apartment dwellings and one stall per 500 square meter floor area for non-residential uses. With respect to short-term bicycle parking, two spaces for apartment dwellings with 20 units or less, six spaces for apartment dwellings with more than 20 units, and for non-residential uses, one parking stall for bicycles for 500 square meters of gross leasable floor area. Next slide, please. As well, proposed built form regulations that are included include rooftop mechanical equipment to be located or screened from view of any abutting street. The ground floor facade shall be equal to 75% or more of the measurement of the front lot line, minimum setback of six meters for that portion of a building providing driveway access to a parking area. Open balconies not covered by a roof or canopy may not project into any required yard, and no parking spaces or drive aisles on the ground floor of an apartment dwelling unless the ground floor has one or more permitted uses besides parking and the spaces are located entirely behind this use for the entire length of the street line facade. Public consultation and comments. So we began this process, it was initiated through an online presentation and survey on the city's Let's Talk platform back in November. On February 16th, we had a virtual open house that was well-attended by somewhere around 25 individuals. We have tonight's public meeting where we're receiving feedback from members of the public. The commenting period will close at the end of tonight's public meeting. All comments received to date will be addressed through the recommendation report at the March 20th, tentatively scheduled for the March 23rd council meeting. And the implementing zoning bylaw is to be forward to or council's approval. Next slide. And finally, the recommendation is that staff prepare an implementing zoning bylaw for the Transit Station Secondary Plan area for the consideration and adoption of council on March 23rd. This concludes tonight's presentation. I'm available along with several colleagues, Francesco Parardi, a senior planner with our planning policy section, as well as Cheryl Selig from Niagara Region. She is the planning lead for the Go Transit implementation. And we're available to answer any questions that may come up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. Appreciate that, that was good, concise. Now, if we could just change this, there we go, thank you. Any questions of council? Okay, seeing none. I'm sorry, oh, Vince Carrio, Counselor Carrio.
Thank you, worship. Just a quick question, as I was reading the report. I noticed that we've, in this particular recommendation, there's a lot of preparation to accommodate bicycles. So if it doesn't turn out that there's a need or that the need doesn't come forward, what would the owners of the property be able to do with that space? Would they be able to change it or revert it back to whatever? I'm just not sure that. Making them put all these things in to accommodate bicycle storage, bicycle lockup. I mean, I'm hoping that it will be needed. But if it's not, a question was asked, what do I do with that space? Are they stuck with it? Valuable land. Is it changeable?
Oh, good question. Brian, could you answer that?
Through the mayor, to the counselor. Ultimately, we're trying to encourage, when it comes to the Transit Station Secondary Plan area in the downtown, car, the use of the car is going to be the least amount, we hope in the future, that cars, the least amount of, the use of personal vehicles is the least amount of travel. We want to encourage walking and alternative forms of transportation, including bicycling. And those are what we want to see upfront. But of course, as development applications come forward and we monitor, then maybe changes could be made to those type of permissions based on what we see. But ultimately upfront, we'd like to see, you know, cycling being prevalent in this downtown area.
Yeah, okay, I just wondered that people were asking. I might like to be taller, but I'm not, anyway, okay.
I hear you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions of council? Okay. Seeing none. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the local planning appeal tribunal dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to notify the city clerk to preserve their opportunity to appeal will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council now hear from anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. And our clerk has provided me a list, and we've got approximately 25 people wish to address council. So what we're gonna, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through them. And I'm just gonna run over the ground rules first. Maximum of five minutes each. Second thing we're gonna ask is that you not repeat what's already been said. We're gonna try to get through this efficiently. The problem is if there's too much repetition, council's gonna tune out, not hear your arguments. So let's focus on new information and let us know if you're supportive or if you're not supportive. And if, like I say, you can just summarize without being too repetitious, that'd be greatly appreciated. So, Mr. Clerk, I understand the first name we have is Sean Montemuro. Mr. Montemuro, are you on the line?
Hi there.
Hello, yeah, we hear you, we hear you, Sean.
Ah, yes, actually, no, I have nothing to bring forward. I just wanted to be in the meeting to kind of see what the feeling was going around about this. I support it, so.
Okay, that's great, thank you, appreciate your participation.
Thank you.
Okay, next, oh boy, I hope the all goes smooth like this. Then, did I say that aloud? Was my mic was on, okay, yeah. Okay, next speaker is Nicolino Manachisi. Manachisi, I don't know if I said that right, are you on the call?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we do, we hear you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a property owner in the designated area. And I'm mostly against your proposal. I'm just gonna bring up one topic. First of all, I think council, not council, the city staff and anybody else that's involved, any private organization that's involved in this amendment to the downtown area there. They should have done a study on seeing how this will affect all the property owners in the area. Like, I would say approximately 90% of the property owners, their lots are very small because they're mostly residential. So automatically, they're all gonna become legal non-conforming. So basically, they're gonna be kind of, in a way, landlocked, that they cannot develop their property because it's, they don't have the frontage, they don't have enough square feet in their land. So how fair is this to the people that have, that lived there for decades and decades, has paid property taxes, been good citizens, supported the city, and now all of a sudden, this plan comes up? Like, I'm not against redeveloping, but it has to be, why didn't you do a study first seeing how this would impact all these small people? And also bring out your plan, what you wish to do. So this hasn't been done. So basically, it's kind of one-sided. So that's why I'm against it. I'm not against developing, I think developing is great. But I think you guys at council should think about this, how this is gonna impact the small people. And then, you know, then if you're gonna subsidize these people for the loss of their properties, because if, basically, if this thing was to pass the way you're proposing, basically, if somebody needed to put their house on the open market, not too many buyers are gonna buy this property because they know that it's, that they can't do much with it. So basically, it, the only people that are gonna pick it up is the developers. So I don't see how fair this is. So anyway, so I would really consider either you change what you're proposing so it doesn't hurt the small people. That's what I would ask for you counselors to do. So that's all I want to say, thank you.
Okay, just before you run away, Mr. Manachisi, two things I need, just if we can get your, we need your address.
Sorry? Forty-four eighty-eight.
Yep.
And forty-four ninety-six Bridge Street.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, you have that? Thank you for that, sir. And then I just want to ask Brian Dick if he could just weigh in on your, just comment on your comments and your questions.
I will do our best to answer that. So just, so the zoning is implementing a secondary plan that went through, council was adopted. There was quite a bit of consultation that occurred with that a couple of years ago. And there was studies done then to look at how we want to support Go Transit moving forward because it's supposed to be arriving in 2023. But also, the zoning is being implemented that for the most part, with respect to the existing uses, they will still be able to continue.
So, Mr. Dick, then, someone like Mr. Manachisi, his property, now how does it affect him? Is he, is he landlocked, is he not able to do any development? Is he, what are his options? I mean, can he, what are his options?
Well, as a single detached use, he could, through this, he would, basically, what he has, he would continue to, he would continue to have that. If he wanted to redevelop even under the existing zoning, if this was not to occur, he would have to assemble land. The zoning is being, we're currently working on something, some additional language in the zoning to allow existing users to continue to, if they wanted to put, say, build a garage on the property, to allow that to continue without the use of minor variance or anything like that. But if he wanted to do anything beyond that, then yes, he would have to have land consolidation. But even that would need to occur in today's current zoning climate.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of council? Yes, Counselor Strange?
Yeah, I just wanted to, through you, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify with Brian, just so, that zoning would continue on to, if they sold it and the person bought it, that zoning would continue with the land?
Yes.
Just to make everyone understand that.
Through the mayor, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we'll go, next on the list is Paul Hartman. No, he's not showing on the list, okay. Not here. Okay, further down the list, we'll go to Harpreet Singh. No, he's not there either. I've got Salom Torres. Salom Torres, are you there? I'm not sure if I'm saying that right.
Yes, I, yes, I am.
Okay, did I say that right?
Salome Torres.
Salome Torres. S A L O M E.
Okay, Salome, Salome. Okay, welcome, welcome to the meeting, Salome. Did you have some comments on the, on the presentation?
My first language is Spanish. My second language is French. So please bear with me, English is my turds. If I mistakes, it's because of that.
You're already better than Counselor Strange, so you're doing well, so carry on, thank you.
I am with my partner here. I'm the, we are the owners of the Youth Hostel for Backpackers on 4549 Cataract Street. And Cataract Avenue. And we have been here for almost seven years, rebuilding this youth hostel that was almost like other buildings around the area. We were successful to keep alive this building from 1885. And the reviews that this youth hostel And the, the reviews that this youth hostel was having before we took over were terrible because it was in a terrible neighborhood, dangerous, dirty, and far away from the tourism area. Now, the reviews, if you go to booking.com and everywhere, is, is walkable. It's just four kilometers. We were able to change the mind of our youth that they don't need to have everything right there at the falls. We were trying to keep the area clean. And travelers from around the world were visiting us more than ever. Also, we have the visit of deers, and I have videos of there. Imagine how clean is now this poor area after the fire of October two thousand nineteen, twenty, two thousand twenty. In front of us, a house took a fire. But finally, this area is cleaner, is secure. And we are concerned about racing all those big buildings. How we are going to affect the, the area in a, the ecology, the ecosystem? We have deers coming here, downtown Niagara. I saw your plans and the green area that you have proposing that plan is almost nothing. And it's, it's very close to the train station that is also green, allowing deers and all of the rest of the animals from the glen, the gorge, coming here. And also, our kids from the neighborhood are coming and not destroying, but playing in this safe area. So I would like to know how you are going to propose areas with friendly bicycle ways when we don't have them? Since I came here seven years ago, bicycles are fighting with cars, with motorcycles. So this plan doesn't have a, a way to cycle Niagara Falls and beyond, the region. If we want to have more stays, not just one day, take the picture of the falls or come to play at a casino, we need paths, green paths, to enable people to discover the area and connect the region. So I put a lot, my partner and I, we put a lot of energy and money from the bank to have this area for youth hostelers. They don't pay a lot in accommodation. They pay a lot in the neighborhood. They go to the bar, the restaurant, all the small businesses. Our youth hostel is for, to share and learn from cultures. We try to promote the culture of Niagara Falls and the region. How we are going to behave with those buildings that you are proposing, twenty stores? And with short rentals? We are having terrible problems with the Airbnb that are not paying taxes and put it in danger people here. The last, the last time was in, in, in Fort Erie with two girls dead. Because nobody was taking care of that property. And it's a, it's a very expensive property. And these short-term rentals will be very expensive too. But security is, is not considered. And we have the same problem in Toronto. And we are bringing the problem here in Niagara Falls. Um, my partner wants to say something else.
My name is Joel Marié, and I'm also on that list, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you are. You're next speaker. So go right ahead, continue on.
Thank you so much. We do support redevelopment, but we wanna make sure that sustainability is considered to its merit. As Salome just said, bicycle path needs to be planned all around the city if we want to sustain all those bicycle parkings that you're planning for this area. Also, there is a question with regards to grandfathering our rights. And I'm, we are concerned, we've put a lot of, of attention and care in redeveloping the zone, but we feel that if, if this goes true and we don't have proper grandfathering rights for the future, allowing for some development even on, on the lands that we have, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be screwed. So, so consideration should be put on, on, on grandfathering more. The last comment is, is a question, why did we not have access to the recording of the Feb. sixteen Town Hall meeting? We would have benefited from, all citizens would benefit from, from having those questions and answers. We, we were, we were provided with the PowerPoint, but that's, that's not enough. So we'll stop here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Joel. Maybe we can get a couple of answers here. So I'll go back to Brian Dick. So Brian, three main questions if you could help us with, if you have the answer. Number one is the February sixteenth Town Hall meeting. Is it available or do we know why it was not available for the people? The second thing is comments on grandfathering rights. And then the third thing will be bicycle paths. Because I know we do have a, an abandoned rail line that goes into the downtown that's intended to become part of our trail system. But I don't know the status if that's being addressed here. So if you could help us out with answers to those three questions for Salome and Joel, I'd appreciate it.
Through the mayor, I'll do my best. And if I need to dwell on pollinators, I shall. But my understanding is just, when it comes to open houses, we don't share the, I guess it would be the video feed. We can definitely, all the comments that we hear in the open house, we will respond to in the recommendation report, as we will to any other comments or correspondence we have received. That was, I think, the first question. The second question was with respect to grandfathering. The current uses under the CB zone would continue through all the new zones. So I think that addresses the grandfathering component.
Will there be a timeline?
Pardon? Sorry?
Will there be a time limit on that grandfathering?
No, there would not be. Those uses can continue. They're permitted now and they will continue to be permitted in the new zoning. There's no time limit. And then the last component with respect to bicycling, the secondary plan does have policies for public realm improvements and, and also pedestrian and bicycle transportation. We hope to implement those. So yes, to the, through the mayor, we'll have to examine if that abandoned rail corridor could be used as a bicycle path, future bicycle path.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. And I, well, Counselor Campbell would like to comment or ask a question? Counselor Campbell?
Actually, comment. I represent our, our city on the Circle Route, Regional Circle Route Committee. And we've been meeting through Zoom. This pandemic has really messed things up for everybody and everything. But we are finalizing tying the entire Circle Route together so that somebody can start in St. Catharines, they can ride all the way out to Fort Erie, come down, ride all the way out to Niagara on the lake, going through Niagara Falls. It's happening. And the monies are available.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Counselor Campbell. And that's fantastic news, that bit by bit, we're tying together the whole network of bike trails, which is.
I'm excited about it. It's really moving forward.
Oh, that's great news. So Joel, did that help answer your questions?
Maybe one, one last little bit about the vacation rentals. Is there, I know that it's being contested, but is, what happens if the contest is, is won by the contestants? And is, what are our recourse to reduce the, the negative impact of vacation rental in the Niagara City?
Okay, well, maybe, Brian, I'm not sure if you're, are you able to answer this, Brian? Or do we have anyone that can answer that?
We're pulling in assistance.
Yes, thank you. Through you, your worship, the local planning appeal tribunal had a hearing on vacation rentals in November. So they're delivering, deliberating the, the hearing and the proposed bylaw. So they'll render a decision on it. Right now, vacation rentals in the bylaw that was passed by council would be limited to commercial areas and existing residential units. So that would be, would greatly reduce the impact, the potential impact of vacation rental units.
So Andrew, what are you saying is if they, if the LPAT, depending how it plays out, if they're allowed, is that what you're asking, Joel? You're asking how will that impact this proposal?
I'm hoping to reduce the negative impact of vacation rental. What are my options?
Andrew?
Okay, I, I think through the, the bylaw that council passed, the intent of that bylaw was to reduce it. They're not, they're not permitted in residential areas under that, that bylaw. So the intent was to, was to, to reduce those impacts.
But right now, we're gonna put ten thousand units, or I don't know how many unit, new units, and there is no limitation of the number of vacation rentals that can be increased in this city. And now we have struggling B and B, legal B and Bs and hotels that will be affected, I think. And you, I would encourage you to reconsider this.
Okay, through you, your worship, the bylaw that was passed by council limited vacation rentals to existing residential units, not, not new residential units.
That's great. Yes, it is. And, and Joel, as we say, we don't know how the LPAT's gonna land, fingers crossed. But as, as mentioned, because of COVID, of course, everything's behind. And it definitely has a big impact on a destination like Niagara Falls. So, so it looks like we're pretty aligned with our, with our bylaw department right now with what you're looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you to you and to Salome. Thank you very much. I have Counselor Thompson. You wanted to weigh in?
Well, I just wanted to talk about vacation rentals. I can't believe we're even having this discussion with all the problems and the complaints we get in residential areas. And you see what happens in Fort Erie, two people, women, killed. All kinds of problems in Toronto and constant complaints here with vacation rentals. Why are we even suggesting that this is an area, commercial areas? That's different, but not in condos or apartments or anything like that. I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Thank you for that, counselor. Thank you. Okay, moving down the list, our next speaker is not here, David Faletta. So we'll move on to Evan Sujan. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right. Evan Sujan?
Yes. Can you hear me okay, your worship?
Yeah, hear you fine. Did I say that right?
Pretty close, Evan Sujan.
Okay, Sujan, okay, great, thank you. So you're, and what's your address, Evan?
Actually, I am, am a planner with Bowsfields.
Oh, gotcha, okay, gotcha.
So we, and David Faletta is, is one of my coworkers. So I'm actually representing probably the same client today. In fact, we're representing twenty-one forty-eight three nine three Ontario Incorporated, who are the owners of property municipally addressed as four three eight nine Park Street, which is one of the properties that's proposed for the CB five zone.
Okay.
And I'll keep my comments short and sweet. Essentially, we submitted a, a written submission today. And it was a little late to make it onto the agenda, so we wanted to follow up with an oral submission. And this, this constitutes that submission. In our opinion, the proposed CB five zoning for the subject property is appropriate and the increases to height and density, as well as the added flexibility through the new land use permissions adequately implements the go transit station area secondary plan, which council has previously approved. And among other matters, encourages the efficient use of land. So we would just like to commend the city, planning staff and council on a progressive approach to the planning for these lands and request that the CB five zoning as currently proposed be adopted.
That's great. Thank you very much, Mr. Sujan. Appreciate the support on that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down. Here, our next speaker will be Sam Manella. Sam, are you there? Hello, Sam, are you there? We're not hearing you unless you're muted. Okay, last try for Sam. If you're there, Sam, we're not, we're not hearing you. Okay, we'll move down then to Jeremiah Rudan. Not there? Okay. How about Simo? Simo? No, Simo's not there either. Okay, Frank DeLuca, are you there?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well, yes, we hear you. Welcome to the meeting. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, hear you now.
Okay, I have a present. Yes, thanks, thanks for having me. I have a presentation that I would wish to, okay, there we go. What I would like to suggest after watching the meeting of February, I put this together. And basically, if I could get to the first slide, the, the, what I'm proposing is a simplification of this process. And I'm suggesting that it go to three zones, CB one, CB two, and CB three. And all what it was suggested in there and a parking requirement of point seven five per dwelling unit. And if I could get to the next slide, I could probably explain it a little bit better. So I am suggesting that the entire Queen Street area stay at the four, four-story level. And, and simply that, you have on your light green and green drawing, kind of a hodgepodge. There are many properties in the Queen Street area that front on two streets and you have them on different zones. So my suggestion is that on the Queen Street area, no one is going to, unless there is a land assembly, there, no one's gonna be able to follow the bylaw in regards to four stories because they wouldn't have the required parking. So my suggestion is that they actually stay at the four and then gradually move the larger stories to the twelve, to the same area bordering Park and Bridge, and moving to red in the, the area that, excuse me, that is, to twenty stories. And then gradually moving towards the gorge, back to twelve, and then the residential zoning in the corner, which is, which remains the same. So after also reading that, I have a suggestion in regards to, if I could just stay on this slide, I can remember the slide. There are one, two, three, four locations in the area that is somewhat owned by the city of Niagara Falls. And there are two properties in the corner, Victoria and Kitchener and Stanley and Kitchener. And my suggestion is that we, through RFQ, get. through RFQ, get uh someone to buy to to uh build um units that uh affordable homeownership units and a combination of that and um a market value um housing units. And the from one to four, five A and five B, then number six is the railway corridor behind or in front of Park Street. Uh, my suggestion there is that it's be sell sold to market value to the to the owners in the area, either on both sides. And seven, uh, the same thing, and then the eight is a laneway in between Queen Street and Huron Street, and that be sold to um the owners there. And nine is where I I guess, and I I was listening to the uh the speaker there and talking about the railway corridor in those sections, and that railway corridor section is literally cut off from everything else. And the that railway section actually goes right into the roundabout, so I don't see that being a very effective bicycle unit, just that section only. And so number nine is the the I would consider the bone of contention with people that are generally in that Queen Chrysler uh St. Clair area. Um, you have it in the in the individual, or sorry, in the other one as being a potential site for uh a high-rise building, and my suggestion is that's the parking for downtown. Um, for events, for major events, and you'll hear that from other speakers in regards to that's the area where we park for major events, where where people park after five o'clock when they're visiting the bars and nightclubs in the area. Um, it's not a um it's not a spot to put that. There are very many spots, which I'll show you the next slide, but just to say, go back to this number nine. I'd like to suggest to you that that there are owners of that area that about that area that are more than willing to purchase that and more than willing to keep the restriction of parking only on that site. So if I could just get to the next slide. I think the concern I've heard from people in the downtown area is that they're concerned about the expropriation of their property. Um, and I explained it to in this particular ad what I was going through, and I and I put this out here because I did not know if I was gonna get be able to speak. So these are what I had just explained to you. So now if you could just go to the next slide. Those are the four areas that I am suggesting. Um, uh, these would be high-rise, uh, three hundred units apiece, at a hundred and fifty units of affordable homeownership and a hundred and fifty of market rent mixed uh condo units. And the 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 one on the top that has two units in there, that's the bus station. The 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 one in the middle is the area behind the old Rosberg's and encompasses some of the railway there. The last one is the city parking lot, and then, you know, the question I I think that'd be on people's minds, why would we want to get rid of the city parking lot? But if you go to the next one, I'll show you why.
This is Frank, you're you're just over the five minutes.
I got really about a minute left, if you don't mind.
No problem. You could wrap things up.
I will wrap it up. Okay, so this is the aerial view of the area in the top right-hand corner is the city lot. And this is what I'm suggesting to do in order to keep to put that into a residential unit. If you just go to the next slide, is to extend Erie Avenue through, and then you have a very large parking lot that could work towards both new buildings that we have. So if just go to the next slide. These are the two properties I was suggesting. Five A was Victoria and Kitchener, the next one. Stanley and Kitchener. Could get to the next slide. And that is the number nine on that list. That is the parking lot behind between Park and Chrysler and Queen Street. Last slide. So the idea of getting nine hundred affordable housing units, homeownership in the area and nine hundred marked market rent mixed inside there. What you're gonna do is you're gonna remove people from the affordable list. You're gonna eliminate the affordable housing list. You eliminate that list, people move from the housing, Ontario housing and regional housing, and that gets homeless into the permanent housing. By by developing six six apartment buildings, you're receiving five million dollars in tax revenue forever. And city strategic commitment, which I just copied off of there, specifically talks about the priorities of diverse econo- economy, diverse and affordable housing and health and safety livable community. This will bring thousands of people to live and work downtown, and I think that is the goal. But this is what I want to really emphasize, is I want you to partner with local builders who hire local employees, who will buy local supplies and spend their money in the local economy. We have the best builders right here in Niagara and Niagara expertise to build something wonderful, and all we need is just your help. And thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. DeLuca. Do we have any questions uh for Mr. DeLuca? Any um, is there any uh comment or anything uh from Brian? Was there anything uh you felt necessary to uh respond to or no?
Um, through the mayor, uh, no particular comment. I've uh thanked the presenter for the presentation, but uh ultimately, we're trying to implement the go secondary plan, which wants to see uh in the eventual future, in the fullness of time, thousands of people uh reliving and reworking downtown. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, uh, Mr. DeLuca. Uh, next, we've got Sheila Mulligan. Sheila, are you there? Hello, Sheila, are you there? If if you hear me, we don't hear you unless you're muted. Okay, all right. Um, all right. Well, we don't hear you, Sheila, if you're there. We don't hear you. Um, next, we've got Farin Baloo.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm the owner of a couple of properties on Park Street, and um, uh, I'm really happy with the proposed plan the city has uh proposed here. Uh, the only recommendation I wanted to put forward was that um railway strip that's right in front of uh people's houses there or properties, uh, like the people, the homeowners have um have a chance to purchase that little strip so we can develop our lands uh proposed to the city planning here.
Okay, um, are you, can you, are you talking about, you're talking about the rail, the abandoned rail land that comes into the downtown?
Yeah, like if we're looking at the, if we're looking at that uh, the the whole site plan here, it's that white strip that comes from Victoria Avenue and cuts right through Park Street, and then it does and it goes down Park Street, and then it goes down Park Street, and then it kind of buds up into people's properties on uh in between Park and Bridge.
Okay, yeah, I know. Yeah, that's the one. That's the abandoned uh rail land. Is that uh, Mr. Todd? Uh, is that the NSNT uh piece, and and uh can you maybe speak to the plans for that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I could help the gentleman. Uh, bit of a separate process in what we're dealing with tonight uh on the zoning, but if you are interested in purchasing those lands, some of the lands, the first part of the process would be to just get something separate in writing uh into our legal department, uh, and then we can uh start investigating uh that process through through legal. So bit different than zoning, but there is a process that you can get involved in if you're showing an interest in buying those properties that are by your your own property.
Mr. Baloo, did did you hear that?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, we've got Dania Janudi. Dania Janudi, are you there?
Hi.
Hello. Yeah, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to say thanks for giving everyone the opportunity to voice their opinions today. Uh, in the interest of time, I'm gonna hold off and give my spot to the next speaker.
Okay, very kind of you. Thank you. Okay, so next up, we've got Patrick Fager. Patrick, are you there?
Yes, hi, uh, your majesty.
Oh, wow, I got a huge promotion. I'm not gonna fit through the door.
I know.
Welcome to the call.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Uh, just wanted to um say that the 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 documents put forth are 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 quite thorough, and I I believe provide an opportunity for um the the right balance between um making this area a little bit more hospitable from a community perspective in the sense that, you know, there is a lot of charm and authenticity uh within some of the existing buildings um within um Park Street and Bridge and and down to uh and down to Queen Street is as well. And I guess, you know, just actually even in listening to some of the in some of the comments and um you know, just wanted to to just voice an approval in terms of the density provided, provided the right mix and use uh takes place, uh allows for a lot of the historical buildings within that site to get uh more activation from a from a from a pedestrian standpoint and um and allows for the, let's say, the um renewal of this whole uh vicinity, I think, with uh increases to the trans uh transportation with regards to um, this will really be the new uh gateway to to the city uh and picking up on some of the historic paths that this density through having um residential program, uh, retail, residential in the form of whether it's market or affordable housing. I think um having having the ability to allow for that level of density provides uh some critical mass and economies of scale that um the whole community could benefit for. So just wanted to sort of put maybe a different spin uh and uh, you know, show that how um really these developments are quite exciting in terms of not knowing what they ultimately will take in terms of their shape or form, but allowing to have sort of a a bold statement to create this area as a as a gateway is is quite promising.
Well, thank you very much for that, Patrick. Appreciate your positive comments. I know we're uh excited. We see the opportunities. I've got a question from Counselor Ianoni.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I took a phone call in the midst of our meeting. It was Shiva Mulligan calling me, saying she was on there, she could hear us, but we couldn't hear her, and they're trial trying to dial back in, and they cannot get back through.
Okay, I've got uh IT in the room here, so um okay, so they're gonna try her again. So we've got, we've still got lots of people here to talk.
All right, just wanted to let you know.
Okay, great. Thanks for letting us know about that. Um, okay, next, we've got Roy, Roy Oi, is that right? Roy Oi? Roy, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we do hear you.
It's it's pronounced we, but that's a common common pronunciation. Don't don't feel bad. Uh, yeah, I think I think like what um some of the the previous commentators mentioned, uh, the the presentation is um very thorough. I think I think overall, I appreciate the city's um vision to promote a sustainable and walkable community. I think that's great. All all oriented around um public transportation. Um, you know, I I do see that there is opportunity with the increased density to have, you know, diverse communities. Um, you know, some of the some of the things like security, um, you know, I, you know, sometimes when there's more people, there's more eyes on the street that that can help with, you know, some of the security concerns that people have. Um, but I do, I do actually have one one question. Um, when I'm looking at the plan, um, I see that along St. Clair Avenue, uh, sorry, along Park Street between Chrysler and St. Clair Avenue, uh, we have a Z a CB four zone, and then it, as we go uh between St. Clair and uh and uh Ali Avenue, um, it turns to a CB two, so a six-story, so it goes from ten stories to six stories. And I, from the February sixteenth uh Town Hall, I understand that, you know, we want the the city is intended to build sort of a increased density um as we get to the the twenty-story zone, CB six zone along um River Road. So I'm curious as to why the density would would shift like that? Like, would it make more sense that we build up the density as we go from Chrysler all the way to River Road along Park Street?
Okay, why don't we see if we can get uh feedback from Brian and Dick? Brian, can you build a help with that?
Through the mayor, uh, that's a good question. Um, if Cheryl's on the line from Niagara region, she may be able to answer that question better than city staff.
Cheryl, are you there?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm here.
Hi.
How are you tonight?
Very good. Welcome to the meeting. Thanks for being here.
No problem. Um, yeah, generally, uh, land use planning, we like to see a gradation in height, and uh, for the most part, the plan does have that, there is that anomaly on Park Street. Unfortunately, I was not part of preparing those land use policies in the secondary plan, and I'm not sure why those particular blocks, the height was dropped down to the six stories as opposed to the ten and the fourteen that are across the street. Um, but those were the policies that were adopted by council in twenty eighteen, and this zoning simply reflects those heights that were adopted at that time.
Okay, thank you for that. Does that help, Mr. Wee?
Um, yeah, I mean, that that's that's a doesn't really answer the question, but
No, it doesn't. I it doesn't.
Yeah, it doesn't, but at least it's 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 out there and it's it's open, so we can, you know, i- i- I'm sure it'll be up for further discussion in the future, but um but overall, I I do um appreciate the plan, and I I I I approve it, so thank you.
No, that's great. I appreciate. At least that comes forward in this plan, in this public meeting, and then uh, uh, Mr. Dick and uh uh Cheryl at the region, at least they can bring that back, and and hopefully we can have that at least be addressed when it comes back to council. Okay, moving along. Next, we've got uh, no, okay, Alexandra Elgin is not there. Okay. Uh, next, Lynn Burdette. Yes, okay. Uh, Lynn Burdette, are you there?
Hello?
Hello. Yep, we hear you.
Okay, uh, thanks for having me. I'm actually uh just gonna do a quick stop because I wanted to hear this meeting, but you're actually on Bluetooth and I'm driving, so I'm just gonna pull over here. So I apologize for that. I didn't want to miss anything.
No, no, we're all good.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, one moment.
Okay.
This is how dedicated I am to the process. Okay. Um, I'm gonna just uh jump into it. I'm actually uh, I'm actually interested in money at this point. I want to just uh touch on something. I want to know if someone can explain the significance of uh section nineteen of the bylaw, maybe perhaps your planning department there. Um, will you be, um, will it include exemptions with this amendment and to save people costs involved with a minor variance, things like that, if that's to occur? Will you have a portion of a no-cost application process for owners with exemptions of section nineteen? I just don't uh, I want to see that there's not uh, you know, penalties or anything for people who are already owners and that when they're trying to conform and stuff.
Okay, that's great. Let's let's get you answered uh to that one, Lynn.
Yeah.
So uh, Brian, are you able to answer that one regarding the exemption?
Yes, um, through the mayor, um, as we mentioned earlier, staff are examining ways that the implementing bylaw could avoid the need for minor variances for existing users.
Okay, and so do we have any idea when we'll get those answers? I know you're looking into it, but she's asking, will there be an exemption and uh confirming that there won't be a cost for the existing landowners?
Yes, if we um, if we don't need the minor variances, it won't be a cost, so we're trying to look for some language to put into the bylaw. It'll be in the the twenty, it will be there for March twenty-third.
Okay, that's good. So that'll be addressed. Does that help answer your first question, uh, Ms. Burdette?
So as long as it comes up at the next meeting, because I know we haven't discussed money here. I haven't heard anything to address any such thing. I haven't heard anything to address any such thing, moving forward on that. So that I would like to hear back on for sure.
Okay.
Yeah. And I just, yeah, and just one more question. How are you guys gonna deal with properties that hold out or want to stop development? You know, I know someone did touch on acquisition of properties and things like that. Would there be, you know, would, would someone be forced to sell to private developers if they're holding out and wanting to keep their property?
Mr. Dick, did you want to address, did you want to address that?
Through the mayor, I'll try my best. The zoning before you is just trying to implement the vision. If somebody chooses not to sell, that is, I think they're right. And there's nothing we would do to ever, as municipality, to force anybody.
Okay, so if, okay, I'm just, you know, worried that, you know, I do own a couple properties in that area that you're talking about. And I'd be worried that, you know, you might have a nice hotel that wants to build there and that my small property would get in the way. What securities do I have?
Mr. Dick, did you want to?
Just to reiterate, no expropriation. Yes, expropriation can only occur, from my understanding, for a public use. A hotel is a private use. I believe there's nothing that the corporation, we can, basically as a private landlord, there's nothing we can do as a corporation to do to force somebody to sell their land. It's to the open market. The person is fine.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Burdette.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Next, we've got Adam Tien. Tien, Adam, are you there?
Yes, I'm Mr. Mayor.
Yep, hi, welcome to the meeting.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, members of the council. Thanks so much for having me. I learn a lot from listening to all the speakers. I speak as a owner of a couple of properties on Park Street and Erie Street, 4638 Erie Avenue and 4618 Erie Avenue. And I just wanted to make my comments as, as an owner in the area. I really followed the amendment process and read all the documents. I like very much in the direction this zoning bylaw amendment and the city are taking in development of downtown. I think, I like the changes being made because I think this amendment will be great for the community building by bringing more people. And as, as another speaker Frank said, that I hope that it will spur more construction and development in the area by giving more work and giving more mixed uses and higher density to the local builders and the local suppliers. And finally, I just think it's, it's finally a vision provided by our policymakers and planners to the future of downtown. And I think which is a, is a vision that the area sorely needs and it deserves. So, yeah, so I'm very much excited to see what happens in the next five to 10 years.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much for your feedback and support.
Welcome.
Okay, next, we've got Jody Burdette. Jody, are you there? Hello, Jody, are you there? If you're there, you might be muted because we're not hearing you. Okay, all right. Okay, so, oh, there we are. Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Jody, we can hear you. Welcome to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. You guys know I have a presentation, right?
Mr. Clerk, yes, we do. Yep, we do.
Okay. One thing, okay, I had a presentation prepared, but I forgot one personal concern. Just want to get that out of the way first. Okay. I would like 4502 Bridge Street changed back to the CB zoning. I bought this to extend my property use at 4480 Bridge Street. I believe this is a zoning amendment and I'm not, I'm not sure, but I think that you can change a zoning. So I wish to have that property zoned back to its original with this amendment. Okay, you don't have to answer that question. It's just a comment I wanted to say.
Okay.
Okay, excuse me, I just ran down the stairs to get to the meeting, so I'm a little bit late.
No problem. Take your time. Maybe in the meantime, we just get a response, give you a chance to breathe. Just ask Mr. Dick, regarding that property on Bridge Street, do you have any comments on changing the zoning back to commercial business with the amendment?
Through the mayor, no comments at this time. We'll take a look at that. It's the first time I've seen that comment, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, so now I'll prepare. It's all, it's all written down, so if it sounds like I'm reading from a statement, it is. And it's just comments. I don't really expect any answers unless you want to do it at the end of it.
Okay, sure.
Hello, everyone. I'm speaking to you as a qualified Ontario building code designer, as well as a downtown property owner and business owner. My comments here are to help property owners to achieve compliance with the future amendment changes. Next slide, please. To get a true sense of the impact area, each number on this map represents a property. Next slide, please. There are approximately 30 new changes with this new bylaw. Many of these are going to create what I would call a compliance failure. There are soft failures, meaning they can be accommodated for fairly easy, medium failures, which will require a fair amount of effort to comply with, then hard failures, nearly impossible to achieve without enormous financial investment. Okay, next slide, please. The minimum lot frontage provision. This provision alone, development locks nearly every property in the downtown core. The overwhelming intent of the official plan is intensification. Intensification is achieved by volume, volume being comprised of length, width, and height. Take the example of the building to the left. Let's just assume it represents a density-conforming building. By simply increasing the height of the building, the illustrations to the right demonstrate how that same volume can be achieved on a lot one-half its size and then again on one-quarter its size. Density compliance can just as easily be achieved with greater depth or in combination of the two. My point is, all three types of buildings are density compliant. They have achieved the overall goal of the official plan and were not dependent on a fixed lot frontage. Unlike other provisions in the bylaw amendment, which have very specific design criteria, the official plan does not state a hard number for lot frontage. Might I suggest that you don't change the minimum requirement, but instead include a sentence that it shall not be less than that required to achieve minimum density. This would allow many of the existing properties the opportunity to develop their lands. Next slide. The minimum ground floor height provision. Several multi-story buildings in the downtown area appear to have a floor-to-floor height of 12 feet. I would guess back in the day, this was the standard that allowed enough space for services, and it also happens to be the maximum height for a flight of stairs. It would be, it would not be practical to ask the owners to raise their entire buildings two and a half feet to comply with this provision. The fundamental principle of the building code is significant compliance. It is where you can demonstrate that the overall intent was achieved. Although not preferred, 12-foot floor-to-floor is certainly a respectable height to be able to enclose services and still have a tall ceiling effect. I suggest you allow these buildings to be an exception and special provision found within Section 19 of the bylaw. Next slide, please. Minimum front and exterior side yard. Last of the hard failures, buildings with 0 to 3-meter setback. These buildings would have to be rebuilt or their facades reconstructed at considerable cost. You might want to consider Section 19 for these as well. Next slide, please. Amenity area for residential, a medium failure. Other than apartment buildings and many properties on Queen Street, most will conform. Section 19 could accept these or allow conversion of existing rooftops to satisfy this requirement despite not having the required surface space. Next slide, please. Minimum ground floor facade width. A situation may arise where a necessary driveway to divert parking to the rear may reduce the facade width below the 75% threshold. I suggest you allow for a second floor facade that extends over and completely encloses the driveway to be an alternative in these cases. It would keep the street-level massing effect, and tunnel designs can add some very unique characteristics to a building. Next slide, please. A sample Section 19, exception and special provision entry. These allow otherwise legal non-conforming properties to expand and change. The goal here would be that we don't really want to give people a legal non-conforming status because basically that's like holding a proverbial gun to somebody's head. They won't be able to change their use, they won't be able to stop their use, and they won't be able to expand their use. I would like to try to avoid that as much as possible. Next slide, please. It has not been addressed in the amendment, but with Canada striving to reduce reliance on fossil fuels, might I suggest that despite provisions of this bylaw, properties continue to have the opportunity to reduce their energy impact via renewable resources. Some of these properties may be there a long time. Next slide, please. Excuse the comical appearance, but the saying is very correct. My building is an example of a medium failure, front yard setback. I believe at the time, it was a policy of definitive separation from residential and commercial. In order to comply with the new provisions, I began conceptualizing a beautiful storefront with multi-level tiered balconies. And then it occurred to me, if I were to begin a $60,000 expansion, incur a $20,000 administration fee, and increase my annual tax burden, would it change the fact that there are no more customers today than there were yesterday? There are CIP and DC reduction programs in place, but they have not been revised to reflect the greater financial burden created by this amendment. When I look out my front window, do you know what I see? While it's not a new train station, I don't see a beautifully constructed roadway with landscaped public boulevards, and I certainly don't see this envisioned increased public presence. The pandemic has shown us how not having the proper infrastructures and support programs in place have a devastating effect. We are going, are we going to keep repeating the same mistakes over and over? I make the suggestion that you defer the implementation date of the bylaw to a date closer to the completion of the public infrastructures, and certainly not until the support programs are in place. Property owners now have an idea of what will be expected of them and can use this time to work within the current regulations to prepare for it. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burdette. Appreciate that. Any questions of council for Mr. Burdette? Okay, and I'll go back to Mr. Dick. I know there was a lot of input and feedback there. Did you have any, I know you're making notes from today. That'll be reflected in the next meeting. But was there anything specific you wanted to address that Mr. Burdette had mentioned in his presentation?
Through the mayor, no. We thank, we thank Mr. Burdette for his presentation and his submissions that he's presented in emails and correspondence, as well as participation in the open house and statutory public meetings. We'll respond to them, we'll review, analyze, and respond to them all in the recommendation report to follow. Thank you.
Okay, good. Yeah, there was a lot of good, good info there. So thank you very much, Mr. Burdette.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, we have, no, Sean Hyde is not here. And next one, Brian Seducic is not here either. No. Okay, and then what about Jacqueline Seber? Is Jacqueline there?
Hi there, are you able to hear me?
Yes, hear you loud and clear. Welcome to the meeting.
Well, thank you so much for listening. So I did have just a quick question. You said a couple times that you cannot expropriate anybody's properties or anything like that down here. Does the CIP and the transit station plan allow for expropriation? Because I was under the impression by what you said that it don't.
Okay, so Mr. Todd, our CAO, is going to address this one?
Perhaps I could follow up. I thought, I thought Mr. Dick had answered the question fairly well, but I'll try just a bit different angle. So typically, council would not get involved in looking at expropriation of any lands where a developer was trying to acquire those lands for private investment. Where the city would get involved in expropriation, where there was public realm improvements that could be justified through what they call hearings of necessity, where the council could prove that lands to be expropriated were specifically for public good and for a project or infrastructure that was for the public good. So that's kind of the parameters, regardless of what plan it is. Those are sort of the general parameters on expropriation.
Thank you for that. Ms. Seber, does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And now we're going to go back to Sheila Mulligan. Sheila, are you there? Sheila, are you there? We don't hear you. I don't know if you can hear us. It's showing that you're not muted. Sometimes, what is it, star six that unmutes and mutes you on Zoom calls? Oh, now you're just muted. Okay, so now you're unmuted. You know, is it possible, maybe we could get her to phone in, Mr. Clerk, like we did last time, or to one of your cells?
Mr. Mayor, she said she can hear us. She does not know why we can't hear her.
Yep, no, we know. So what we're gonna do, I'm sorry, what's that, Mr. Oatley?
So Sheila, if you check out your invitation that you received in your email, there should be a phone number that you could call into the Zoom meeting with. And if you do that, you'll be, you'll be given the audio ability to this call. So if you just leave your Zoom meeting, just check out that email and phone in that way.
Okay, great. Okay, so we'll give her a... Okay, Sheila, are you, are you there? Can you hear me?
Through Carolyn's phone?
It's technology, technology on top of technology, but it's working. So thank, welcome, welcome to the meeting, Sheila, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Jim, and council people, members. I just have, I'll, I'll be as quick as possible. This has been a little frustrating. Okay, my first concern is about the setbacks enforcing the small footprint owners to amalgamate with others to be legal, nonconforming. That's a question I've heard answered, but it's a concern. The next is you can't do anything with small lots, but sell to make bigger lots. Okay, then I'll go right to the next thing. I heard the grandfathered in. I heard Cario on the youth hostel speak about the bike paths that are overrated at this time. I've heard that we're doing green space for the rail lands that the city owned and have still done nothing about. I've driven around the city of Niagara Falls with the exception of the falls, and there are no twenty-story buildings that portray with the historic buildings, the downtown. I have a question. Of those twenty-story buildings in those four blocks that in oh eight was going to be called Pat Simon Way has never happened, and now it never will. And what do those buildings house? Retail commercial on the bottom, residential on the top, and nothing again for downtown. I have still concerns about the parking spaces, about the disclosure, that this is too quick a decision consulted before the vote. The city exchanged lands, but not the property owners, and that the dream of no cars is a dream. So let's build Niagara Falls. Let's build it back around the GO Center, the same way the people of Park Street spoke. Frank DeLuca changed lands for parking. This needs more study, and it is a grievous concern. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Sheila, and I'll go back to Mr. Dick. Did you, you get all of her comments, and was there anything you wanted to reply with at this point?
Through the mayor, thank you. We have, we've recorded all the comments. Thank you, thank you, Sheila. We have also heard written submissions, and we'll respond to those in the recommendation report. Just ultimately, yet again, the zoning is implementing council's vision that was addressed through the original secondary plan, and that was supported by thorough study and analysis, and not only adopted by city council, but approved by regional council. And it's designed to support GO train service and the greatest concentration of people living and working in the closest proximity to the via the GO, future GO rail station. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry, go ahead, Sheila.
Quick answer, just it's a, it's a quick study again. It has changed from your original. So the transparency of City Hall is certainly not transparent. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Sheila. Thanks for your patience getting through. Okay, Mr. Clerk, Mr. IT, Mr. Oatley, do we have any other speakers in the queue? No? Okay, okay, we're good. Okay, the speaker part is done. Let me just get all my notes back here together. Okay, folks, the only other comment we have, Lynn and Jody Burdette did request a follow-up question. So we'll just give them a couple of minutes if they would. So if Jody or Lynn, if either of you wanted to have a closing comment, this have you?
Hello, I'm here, I'm here.
Yep, I can hear you, I can hear you.
Okay, I believe there was a comment about very high stories that I never addressed in my presentation, but I'd like to make a comment about that.
Okay.
If you look across to the United States, they have standalone buildings that dominate all the others. This is very unsightly. What safeguards are in place to prevent such a thing from happening here? There is no guarantee that all the properties in a specific zone are all going to be maximum height. If you were to allow the first one built to be twenty stories, what's to say that the surrounding properties are not all going to be the same size? And now we have a standalone building dominate all the others. It's, it's good for the casino area or Toronto, but there's nothing wrong with the downtown layout of Niagara Falls on the lake. It's super busy with smaller buildings. And I think Niagara Falls should be a little bit envious of how building, how busy their downtown is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, are we good then? Okay, good. All right, thank you for that. So is there any other comments or questions from council at this point? Okay, seeing none. The public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. And we're looking for a motion that the recommendations that staff prepare a zoning bylaw amendment for the transit station area for consideration and adoption at our March twenty-third meeting. Looking for a motion. Moved by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Campbell. There's no further discussion. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. And Mr. Clerk, yes, Mr. Clerk?
So I just wanted to point out procedurally that this public meeting was, or actually, the report from planning was done a little bit different than what we've seen in the past. Again, this was a city-initiated zoning bylaw amendment. So the public meeting portion was held tonight as the recommendation that was just approved did state that the adoption, or sorry, the zoning bylaw amendment will actually come back at the March twenty-third meeting. And it's, it should be perhaps through your worship, if you could just publicly state one more time for assurance that the public meeting is now closed. So we don't go through this process again on the twenty-third. It will be up to council then to debate the recommendations that come forward at the March twenty-third meeting.
Okay, so. There we go. So again, as per advice from our clerk, I will reiterate the fact that this public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, and of course, that's the one we're talking about on the transit station secondary plan area is now concluded. The planning meeting is closed, council unanimously voted, and brought forward the recommendation that staff will be preparing a zoning bylaw amendment for the transit station area for consideration and adoption at the March twenty-third council meeting. So for anybody that's interested, that's the next time you can participate. Counselor Strange?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think it was a great represent, represent, our presentation, sorry. And we got feedback from some of the concerned residents, and I know quite a bit of them. You know, a change is tough sometimes. I think this is going to be great, great for the city. You know, how, how, how many talks have we had in the past years? And going on when Counselor Thompson was mayor revitalizing kind of downtown. And we're seeing it finally coming to fruition, and then, you know, with the GO train and, and, you know, we were having a trail down there with, with the former railroad. It's a great mixed use with some affordable housing. And I think if we learned anything from this pandemic, it, it's, it's that people can actually stay at home and work now through Zoom. And people are going to love to come down to Niagara Falls and move down to Niagara Falls where they can afford a property, either whether it's from Toronto, Hamilton, whatever it may be. And they can stay downtown, get off the GO train, and they may have to go to work one or two days a week, or they might have to travel to Hamilton or Grimsby, Toronto, wherever it may be, and they can come down, go there, do their, you know, eight hours, and then come back and walk to their condo. And they're going to be spending tons of money in then those downtown businesses. You know, we have an entrepreneurial educational hub down there. We have tons of businesses that are going to go crazy down there because of the people that are going to flock to Niagara. I think it's, it's a great positive move. We do have some concerns like with Sheila and a few others, and hopefully, we can, we can help with those concerns come the next meeting.
That's great. Thank you for the feedback on that, Counselor Strange, and I agree with everything you said. That area, downtown's time has come. There's going to be some good opportunities with the GO train being right downtown and everything around it. So it's exciting times. So I've got Vin, Counselor Cario, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Dubrowski.
Thank you, your worship. There were very good comments from the people who live and pay their taxes down there, and most of them have been in many years, have been down there many years. So I know the staff is taking great care to take notes, tape their conversations. I'm just looking forward to seeing some of their ideas reflected in what we see at the next meeting. Because they're the ones that have their lives and their livelihoods on the line. I don't like it to just be all of what we do. I'd like to see what, you know, what, what they suggest and what they're putting forward, some of that shown in the next meeting as well.
Yeah, great, great feedback. Thank you for that. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I was thinking about this today. And in nineteen seventy, I was the speaker at, in front of City Hall when we opened City Hall, nineteen seventy. And we had a debate for years. We're going to keep the City Hall downtown to make sure that Queen Street is going to be alive and supported completely. And one of the other things that we talked about at that time, we have to have all kinds of apartments and buildings on the sides to make sure that people are there to support Queen Street and the businesses. So only fifty years later, we're finally getting to that point. This is really historic. And this is going to make the difference of Queen Street finally not struggling, but going to be rambunctious. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Dubrowski?
I don't think I've heard the word rambunctious at a council meeting before. That was good. Yeah, I'll echo Counselor Strange's comments and Counselor Thompson's comments as well. Since I can remember, for years, the feedback that I've received from residents and business owners downtown is that we need to fix downtown, and what was proposed here tonight, well, we just voted on. It really is a game changer for downtown. It'll increases, Counselor Strange brought up, more housing opportunities, more affordable housing opportunities, trails for locals. I can see families from the GTA coming down. The GO train spending their day either downtown or taking their bikes down to the brink of the falls. And Counselor Strange is right, change is very difficult, and progress is impossible without change. And we've heard it from business owners, residents alike, we need to fix downtown, and this is a great first starting step, and it's, it really is a game changer. So it's exciting to be a part of it.
Good comments. And, and you know, I, I've been speaking with some of the downtown people lately. And this spring, we're working closely with the region. Our staff have been working closely with the region to redevelop the whole area around the GO train station. So just as a reminder, we're going to be extending Thorold Stone Road right to the downtown. It's going to come behind the Gale Center, and there's going to be a roundabout built this spring. It's going to be right at the, the area of the intersection of Victoria Avenue and Bridge Street. And connecting that major arterial road from the Queenie right to the downtown is going to be amazing. And you're right, the people have come to realize, we moved ten years into the future with COVID. People realize you don't have to live in Toronto and work in Toronto. You can go into Toronto one or two days a week and Zoom from here. And a lot of people are going to be able to walk from their condo and go to the train station and go all the way to Toronto, or they'll be able to access the GO station through Thorold Stone Road. There's going to be a lot of important improvements that are going to take place in that area. It's going to change the trajectory of the downtown. So it's an exciting time, and we wish everyone there well. So a lot of work, and I want to say thanks to all the staff, all of our planning staff, Brian Dick, Andrew Bryce, Alex Rulovich and all his team, and Cheryl at the region, and everybody else. A lot of people have been working very hard. Of course, our CAO in economic development, Serge Falasetti, have been working very hard for years to do this. So it's not, and then my prediction is, in a few years, they're going to look back and say it was an overnight success. We're going to realize, no, we're going to have Wayne Thompson looking like Weekend at Bernie's, saying, no, it was nineteen seventy when I stood in front of City Hall, and here we are today. So anyway, thanks to every, thanks to everybody and for all your positive input and feedback. We're going to move now along to the next planning item, six point two on your agenda, for those of you following along. And oh, yes, and if somebody could please get ahold of Lori LaCoco. And are we going to call her? Okay, so so we just need, so we need someone to just text her or give her a quick call, let her know to rejoin. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you for that. We'll just give it a minute for her to rejoin. There she is. Welcome back, Counselor LaCoco. You missed all the excitement. Phew, this is crazy. Hey, moving along, I now call on our clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda.
The public meeting is now being convened to consider city-initiated amendments to the city's zoning bylaw. Notice was given by placing an advertisement in the Niagara Falls Review on Saturday, February sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment or would like to preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal shall give notice to the city clerk immediately after today's public meeting.
All right, sorry about that. Now I'll call on our acting director of planning, Mr. Andrew Bryce, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, your worship. I just have a PowerPoint to share. Okay, I apologize. Okay, in twenty twenty, the city passed a temporary use bylaw to permit greater flexibility in establishing outdoor patios and sidewalk cafes as accessory uses to various businesses that sell food and drinks. The bylaw expired on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. The city is proposing to pass a similar temporary use bylaw to permit greater flexibility in establishing outdoor patios and sidewalk cafes as temporary accessory uses operated in conjunction with a business where food or drink is served, sold, or offered. The bylaw is intended to temporarily allow businesses like restaurants, bars, other similar businesses to open and expand outdoor patios and sidewalk cafes to assist in providing a safe environment for patrons. The bylaw is proposed to remain in effect until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, so a period just under two years. The proposed bylaw would permit an outdoor patio or sidewalk cafe accessory to a variety of uses that are permitted in commercial industrial zones. Both bylaws would amend the regulations in bylaw number seventy-nine two hundred, which applies to most of the city's urban area, fifty-three thirty-five, which applies to the casino and Niagara lands, of the city's urban area, 5335, which applies to the Casino Niagara Lands, and finally 395, which is the Willoughby Township bylaw. As the order in council, which permitted the passage of the previous bylaws expired, the normal notice requirements of the Planning Act are applicable. Planning analysis, uh, the proposed temporary use bylaw would conform to and be consistent with provincial policies as it would assist and support businesses that serve food and drink in providing a safe environment for patrons, allow these businesses to reopen, support efforts to rehire workers, and assist in economic recovery efforts in the city. Official plan, the lands that are affected by the bylaw fall under the commercial and industrial designations primarily. As the uses an outdoor patio or sidewalk cafe would be accessory to are contemplated by the official plan to locate in these land use designations, the proposed zoning would comply with the official plan. Uh, zoning bylaw, I apologize. Uh, the regulations are very similar to the regulations that were in the 2020 zoning bylaw. The proposed bylaw would permit an outdoor patio or cafe accessory to the following uses, uh, in the following zones. In commercial zones, a bake shop, a restaurant, a drive-in restaurant, a hotel, a place of entertainment, a private club, a restaurant, a tavern, a beer, wine or liquor store, a licensed establishment and a nightclub. In industrial zones, a winery, an adult entertainment parlor and a brewery. In addition, where any of these uses are permitted, uh, in the deferred commercial or deferred tourist commercial zones, or in site specific zoning bylaws, those uses would be allowed to have an outdoor patio or sidewalk cafe. In bylaw 5335, the commercial industrial zone one, a restaurant, hotel, licensed prime premises, a bake shop and a winery, distillery or brewery would be allowed to have an accessory patio or cafe. And finally, in 395, the Willoughby Township bylaw, the highway commercial and village residential zones, a restaurant, hotel and licensed premises would be allowed to have a patio or cafe. Again, the regulations that are proposed are very similar to the, uh, 2020 bylaw. Uh, the regulations would permit tents and other temporary structures to enclose or cover outdoor patios, would require or remove requirements, uh, that limit the maximum capacity of outdoor patios, would not require parking for seating or occupancy on an outdoor patio, but allowing outdoor patio to locate on parking spaces and aisles required for the main use, uh, would, uh, eliminate the requirement of a 10-day, maximum 10-day period for a tent or air-supported structure. Uh, such structure could remain until December 31st, 2022. And finally, fees for municipal property occupancy may be waived at the discretion of the directors of municipal works and planning. Regulations are recommended for the following reasons. An outdoor patio is already permitted use to a restaurant and other uses. These uses have been added to the bylaws that temporary regulations can be applied to them. Additional uses have been added to broaden the type of businesses that serve or sell food or drink that may utilize an outdoor patio. Uh, such uses may be a tasting area for a winery or brewery. Permitting, uh, these temporary structures, uh, that, that may cover a patio, uh, will provide shelter for customers and to, that, that use a patio or cafe and implement weather and thereby assist in providing room for social distancing. Removing the limitations on outdoor patio occupancy assists, also assisted in social distancing. Exempting outdoor patios from parking requirements is not expected to create negative impacts. It's expected that many patrons that would be inside, let's say a restaurant, would locate to an outdoor patio during this period. And finally, temporary permitting required parking for the main use to be used for an outdoor patio is acceptable in order to provide room for social distancing. An outdoor patio or sidewalk cafe would be required to be clear of any walkways required for accessibility purposes, emergency access or fire routes. Any temporary structures would be required to be ruled out expired of the bylaw. Pursuant to the relief granted to sidewalk cafe leases last year, the bylaw proposes road occupancy fees be waived at the discretion of directors of municipal works and planning. Uh, I must add that that's for city, uh, right of ways and city sidewalks, uh, not regional right of ways. The region, any, any kind of lease that's on a regional property would be subject to the requirements of the region. And finally, none of these regulations will exempt an outdoor patio or sidewalk cafe from any requirement of a liquor license or a sidewalk cafe agreement. The amendment is recommended, it, as it complies with the provincial policies, as it will promote economic recovery and growth by assisting hospitality businesses in reopening and expanding in a safe manner. The, uh, the bylaw complies with the official plan as it permits outdoor patios and sidewalk cafes accessory to uses that are already permitted under the, uh, land use designations. The proposed zoning regulations will provide greater flexibility for businesses serving or selling food and drink to establish outdoor patios with, with a socially distanced environment to patrons without creating excessive land use impacts. And finally, a sidewalk cafe will require the appropriate sidewalk cafe agreement. Recommendation is that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment application and pass a temporary use bylaw to introduce temporary zoning regulations for cafes and patios to remain in force until December 31st, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Andrew. Well done.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions of council before, uh, before I close this, uh, this meeting? Uh, councillor Strange?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, with the new regulations, and obviously we have a big event coming up, uh, March 17th with St. Patty's Day. Um, but I know the restaurants under red level, I think they're allowed 10 indoors. How many would they be allowed outdoors if, uh, someone created a, a sidewalk patio or whatever it may be?
Uh, are you talking about during the summer?
No, i- is this starting right away? This, if, if we pass this?
Mr. Bryce?
Yes, through you, uh, your worship, uh, the bylaw would be, uh, if it's passed tonight, uh, there would be a 20-day appeal period. Uh, so the bylaw would come into force, uh, in late March.
Okay. I was just thinking if, if somebody wanted to, uh, to make a little patio with heaters and, and whatnot for, uh, St. Patty's Day celebrations or maybe, I didn't know how many people are allowed on the patio because you're, I know you're allowed 10 indoors during red. I wasn't sure. And I know that's probably not going to change before, uh, before that holiday. I was just wondering, uh, if it would be possible to maybe make the change, um, for that date, um, so that people can celebrate St. Patty's Day if we're allowed to do that.
But Mr. Bryce, you're saying it's a 20-day appeal period? That's, uh, municipal act?
Uh, through you, your worship, uh, currently the zoning bylaw does permit certain uses such as restaurants to have an outdoor patio. A sidewalk cafe would also be able to be leased. Uh, the, um, what would not be permitted is to have a covering over a sidewalk cafe, uh, or an outdoor patio unless it complies with current, uh, bylaw regulations.
Okay, but the timing, councillor Strange is asking, uh, do we have to wait? Is it mandated that we have to wait the 20-day appeal period?
Yeah, through you, your worship, uh, it would be a 20-day appeal period under the Planning Act.
Okay. So the existing patio should be good, uh, councillor Strange? Okay, uh, thank you. Councillor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Bryce. I was wondering regarding the parking, um, changes that you had on there. Usually there's a certain number of parking spaces per, per restaurant guests. And with this proposal, it didn't talk about that. The concerns that have been brought to me, I, I think this is a wonderful proposal and, uh, it's something definitely what we have to look at, getting the economy back for hospitality industry. The one concern that has been brought to me is about the parking. If there's not a certain number of parking spots required, then what ends up happening is people park on, uh, city roads, residential roads, uh, illegally parking maybe. And I was wondering if you, um, had any discussions about the parking that went along with the, the proposal that you decided to put forward?
Mr. Bryce?
Just through you, your worship, uh, it's a bit of a compromise there. I, I understand. Um, the bylaw last year did have this provision. We tightened up, uh, provision a bit to reflect that in, uh, let's say a multi-pendant, uh, uh, property that the parking that could be used is only the parking that would be required for the, uh, for this, for the main use like a restaurant. So if a restaurant, uh, is in a plaza with a, with a hairdresser or a, or a grocery store, they would only be able to use the parking that's associated with the, uh, with the restaurant.
Councillor?
Thank you. I just want to put it out there that our, our bylaw officers might need to be aware of this. It might interfere with, um, traffic flow or, uh, parking in illegal areas. That's the only problem I see with the whole proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. I've got councillor Dubrowski, then Thompson.
Uh, through you, Mayor, to Mr. Bryce. Mr. Bryce, is there a way, I mean, we haven't voted on this yet, but I know a lot of the, the restaurants and the bar owners that I chat with through, throughout the year, um, they always have questions that I feel we could maybe provide a cold snow version on the website, just outlining the bylaws and exactly what, what is allowed and what, uh, what's not allowed. Is it possible that with communications, um, you can work on a document and maybe we could have a landing page on the website, on the city's website, at least for a couple of months, that just describes and outlines all the, the to-dos and what not to-dos in terms of the patios and what's allowed? I'm not sure if that was done last year. I know we were directing a lot of the, the business owners, um, to various staff, but just thought maybe we could, uh, um, we could give a cold snow version to those business owners when they're, uh, when they're preparing for their patios, whether it be for St. Patty's Day, um, as councillor Strange is alluding to or for later on in the spring.
Yeah, we've got the C O on, uh, the call as well to help out with this one. Uh, Mr. C O?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know whether, uh, Mr. Falasetti's on or not, but, um, what had happened last year councillor was that, uh, through economic development, they had done, uh, an outreach to the BIA's and, and business owners to walk them through the rules. Uh, they helped them, uh, obtain their patio permits. So, uh, we really handed that over to business development. They did a great job in, in carrying that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, it does help. Sounds like we have it under control. I, this is a, it's a no-brainer. I mean, um, it, it's no secret that businesses are, are suffering all across the world. Never mind just our city, but, uh, so the least we can do to, to help them get through, uh, the next three or four months. And I wrote a report today that, uh, we're looking to a warm spring. So hopefully a lot of these restaurants can at least get back to the capacity with patios, whether or not we're in the red, gray or, or orange zone and, and generate some revenue and, um, get people going out to eat again within the city. But either way, great, uh, great presentation and proposal. Happy to support it once we close the meeting.
Thank you for that. We've got councillor Thompson?
Yes, I think, uh, this is, uh, very appropriate. Um, this is going to affect all of the tourist, uh, development areas and, uh, most of the people are in hotels and they just walk up and down the street. So they don't look for parking spot. We never had a problem last time and I think this would be, uh, appropriate. And I also liked, uh, Tim Parkers from the Victoria Centre supporting the bylaw and the way it's written. I think if you ever tried to, uh, have parking spots, this would be going, holding people up for months. So I think this is appropriate and I think it's going to work again. Yes.
Thank you for that. Uh, did I have anyone else? Uh, anyone else from council? Okay, seeing none, uh, we don't have anyone else to speak. Uh, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, currently there are no, uh, members of the public, uh, on standby. We did have one registered, but they're not on the line. Uh, but I would like to point out that we did get a late submission today. It's not part of your, uh, electronic agenda, but there was a submission that was emailed to all of council, uh, from, uh, the Luddies Lane BIA and it was just some correspondence in support of the proposal.
I would move the zoning bylaw amendment, your worship.
Sorry about that. Give me one half second. So the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. We've got a motion from councillor Peter Angelo, looking for, second from councillor Campbell, that the recommendation, a council approved the zoning bylaw amendment application and pass a temporary use bylaw on tonight's agenda to introduce the temporary zoning regulation for outdoor patios and sidewalk cafes as outlined in the report. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. All right. So we've got that part done. So we're going to move on to reports. Uh, first report, special COVID, uh, 19 pre-authorized property tax payment plan. There's a recommendation for the information to councils. We're looking to receive. Okay, motion by councillor Peter Angelo, second by councillor Strange, that we receive the, uh, report. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Um, item 7.2, outstanding not-for-profit accounts receivable balances. Uh, there's a recommendation that prior to sending out any accounts receivable balance belonging to non-for-profit, that collection staff will update council on the collection efforts in camera prior, uh, from direction of our last council meeting. So look for a motion. Okay, motion by councillor, uh, Dubrowski, second by councillor Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, thank you for that. Item 7.3, property tax penalty and interest. So there's two recommendations here. Need some feedback from councillor. Councillor Carrio?
Thank you, your worship. This was something that we discussed, having brought back to us to have a look at, depend, and we would deal with it depending on where we are with lockdowns and where our city was, as far as being back to work and people being back to work. Uh, and I think, I thought that's what we were going to do. I didn't think that we were just going to bring this back and go back to 15 or 18% um, interest again on unpaid, uh, taxes. I thought we were going to bring it back to discuss and depending on where we were are in the pandemic, decide what we were going to do with this. I understand that the city has built in some interest as part of our revenue. But your worship, my feeling is going forward that we should take the revenue part out of our budgeting process from this because I think it's very unfair to depend on revenue by charging this type of interest rate to taxpayers or having a tough time paying their taxes. It doesn't sit well with me. It never has. And I know that it hasn't sat well with other councillors. And I know that the finance people have relied on this as part of their funding in the past. But your worship, this is something that I think going forward, we're going to have to come to grips with not using this as, as part of our, of our standard funding. We need to get to a reasonable rate. I don't think taxpayers mind paying, uh, a reasonable penalty so as not to use the city as a bank. But when interest rates are 2%, 3% for the council to charge 50%, I just think it's outrageous and I think it's not fair. It's like kicking our, our taxpayers when they're down and I don't think it's right. So I think we should be looking at what else we can do, whether we put this off for a while or come up with a reasonable rate that we can live with going forward. I'm okay with either one, but I can't support charging the taxpayers, whether it's commercial or residential or whatever, 15 points, your worship. I just think that's too much money.
Okay, thank you.
I know all the arguments. I know others do it. I know everybody else does it, whatever. I have heard them all. I know the staff counts on the interest. But your worship, I couldn't, I couldn't charge people this rate if I was lending money. So anyway.
Okay. Uh, all right, councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I just want to echo the one comment and that's in regards to, I guess, um, how we, how we formulate the budget right now. Uh, councillor Carrio is correct in the fact that we do rely on, uh, collection of interest and penalties as revenue. And I mean, I support, um, not having it deemed as revenue, but rather at the end of the year, putting any monies that has been, that have been collected from interest and penalties into something such as, uh, a rate stabilization reserve or even a capital reserve. This way you're not relying on that money every single year. Uh, so you're not relying on people failing in order to, uh, I guess, you know, make your budget balance. So if we could get to that point, um, you know, I would definitely support that. And I'm not sure that we really need to make a decision today on, you know, uh, whether we continue with the decreased interest rate. Um, I think we can probably do that later on, as I do believe that the rate has been, uh, minimized for a little while anyway.
Okay, uh, back to councillor Carrio and then I'm going to get. Okay, back to Counselor Carrio, and then I'm going to get Mr. Todd involved.
Well, Your Worship, I think that because we had said we were going to bring this back and talk about it today, and, you know, we just came on a lockdown, we're really no better off today than we were when we put this in place to help the people in our community that are having a tough time. So maybe it's just a matter of a deferral for three months and bring it back to us again. You know, leave it as is, whatever we were doing, and bring it back to us. But then, like I said, maybe come up with a rate that we can live with going forward, not one and a quarter per month. But, I mean, if you, when you get time, or when we get to that, I'd make a motion.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll ask Mr. Todd if you could weigh in.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You will recall that back in December, we added an additional period of time where we would reduce the interest rate. That will end on March 31 of this year. So there is a decision that's needed tonight. The staff recommendation is to continue that reduction until July, sorry, June 30 of this year. So we would at least need the motion if council would like to keep the reduced rate, to get a motion to push it from April 1 to June 30. Then council can debate the issue of how it wants to deal with the budgetary issues later on. But for tonight and for our finance staff, in order to start applying penalty or not, or how they're going to apply penalty, they would need that decision. And I think that's in keeping with what council's previous decision was. And this would extend that penalty reduction to 0.5% per month until the end of June.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So hearing what he said, did you want to make a motion? Counselor Carrio?
I would make that motion, Your Worship, that we do it that way.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Counselor Carrio, seconded by our Budget Chair, Counselor Peter Angelo, that council continue with the current penalty rate until the end of June. And then at some point before then, we'll decide what we're going to do going forward and what our penalty policy will be. Like you said, Counselor Peter Angelo, that's going to go into a stabilization rate reserve, capital reserve, or where those, I think those are both great ideas, not being dependent on our operating budget from, you know, people not paying their taxes and having interest. I agree. So, and especially when it's $2 to $3 million a year, that's a significant amount of money to count on people not paying their taxes. So anyway, that sounds great. So we've got the motion. You've heard it seconded. Is there any feedback to the motion? Okay, then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to 7.4, capital budget funding. There are three recommendations in the report. Looking for direction. A move by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Strange, that we follow through on the three recommendations regarding our budget funding swap. So they're just switching the funding around with the gas tax. So we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Item 7.5, I know there's some interest in this one, and I've got you, Counselor Thompson. So there's a recommendation for the O P G lands along the Chippewa Creek. And Counselor Thompson, you have the floor.
Thank you. I was really shocked to see this on the council agenda tonight. One reason is because the people who are affected by this have not been notified about what we're talking about today. And we're talking about taking the opportunity for all of the people on both sides of the Chippewa Creek, away from their docks and after, if they sell their house. Well, this whole thing could go on for many, 15, 20 years or longer before you get enough land where you could do. All the people who bought there, bought there with increased prices for their properties because of the Chippewa Creek and the opportunity to have a dock. And I know exactly what this is, because I had a little cottage out there and I had the dock. And I tell you, I'm so sorry that I had to sell it. I drive by it regularly and say, oh, I wish I had that again. Anyway, if all the people there maintain, cut the grass, look for any debris, and look after all of that property on both sides of the creek. And if you took that away from them, you would open that for all kinds of people visiting Niagara Falls, coming there, having parties and debris, and the peoples in their house, looking at all of that going on. You would have so much trouble and aggressive people in those houses. I think this is a really bad decision. And particularly, I would like the people all to be notified what we're talking about and get their response. I have no interest of ever doing, supporting something like this. We have some open areas along there. And the boat dock area, I go down there and try to pull in when it's so busy in the summertime. And you can't even find a place to park your car. And you can see people all sitting there because they want to sit by the water side. Anyway, that's a really special place. And that would really be a stab in the back to the people who are along that and have maintained that property. And it's always very nice. No parking on it. And so I would like to make a motion that we defer this and notify the people and bring it back after they have the opportunity to express themselves to all of the council members.
Your Worship, before you take a second there, can I just ask, do we need to defer it? Or are we just being asked our opinion? Because if we're not in favor of the recommendation, then there's no sense in really having a public meeting and getting people upset then.
Well, I don't have any problem with that. I would make the motion. But I'm just trying to get the support of the council.
I agree. Like, I agree in the sense that, you know, there should be a public meeting if we do plan to go down this road. I'm personally not in favor of going down this road, so.
Okay, I make a motion that we defer this and don't support it.
Okay, that's just, yeah. You just make the motion to not support it. That's your motion. Yeah, okay. So we've got a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Strange. But I've got Counselor Strange, and he's been eager. He's been waiting.
No, no, I'll second it. And when I saw this on the agenda and the report, I just couldn't imagine us passing something like this without having, you know, can you imagine how many residents along Front Street, along Bridgewater, who would just be going insane? You know, they bought those properties because of those leased lands that they can have docks on. They can enjoy it. They take care of it. They beautify it. They beautify Chippewa. And, you know, it wouldn't affect the people that own it now, but it would affect it if they sold it and they wouldn't be able to have that lease involved anymore. So, and, you know, people buy those lands because of that leased area that they can enjoy. Enjoy the dock. They can have a boat. They can swim. And just, and, you know, and there are docks along, near Tim Hortons, where the public can enjoy. But they don't have to take care of that property where, you know, the O P G land is leased to these residents. They take care of it, and it is beautiful along there. And I, I think, I've known this as long as I remember, to have that leased land with O P G and that agreement. And Chippewa is so proud of it, and the residents are so proud of having, especially along Front Street and Bridgewater. So I definitely couldn't even see this going forward. So I will second the motion to not go forward with this.
Okay, just before we, I've got a lot of you want to speak. Just before we do, I know Mr. Nickel, Eric Nickel, would like to weigh in on this. This is his report. So, Mr. Nickel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I felt it would be important just to clarify the lands we're actually talking about. So just to be absolutely clear, we are not talking about the lands along Bridgewater. We're only talking about a small segment of land that the city is licensing and the city is maintaining on behalf of O P G. And that land is located in the graphic that I pulled up for you. But it actually extends along the full length of the existing boat dock, including an existing dock that is right against our parking lot. And it extends easterly to Greenwood. So it covers about 10 private docks. And this is not about removing docks from personal ownership now. This is about taking the opportunity when new owners are potentially moving to a property, about removing that opportunity to, that provides exclusive access to the waterfront. So again, these, this is not something the city has jurisdiction over, but O P G is looking at how they manage their waterfront licenses, which they renew every five years. And because we're the upstream tenant of the land, they wanted our opinion for the land that we license and maintain. So, you know, it's staff's recommendation that this be maintained in public access so the public can get further access to the waterfront, which could allow for future opportunities to expand that boat dock, expand the parking lot, and so it won't be as crowded as Counselor Thompson has witnessed in the past.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Nickel. Okay, so I've got a whole bunch of people. Now, there's new information who still would like to speak. I saw Counselor Peter Angelo. You had your hand, and then I'll work my way through. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I guess the way that I and probably most of us read the report, like, I saw that it showed the example area. But I didn't realize that it was only specific to that area. But if it is just a small portion of the waterway that staff are looking to acquire, I mean, I don't think I would want to just target one little area and take those docks away from those people. I think before I did something like that, I would rather look at other areas. I mean, obviously, if we go to the north side of the creek, in between Low Lift and Stanley Avenue, there's quite a lot of room there. I mean, we can, we can have some, some public space there if we like. And then we can have, you know, boat launches from, you know, from the end of Sodom Road and then also from the north side of the creek, in my opinion. I don't know that we have to just simply make the decision that we're going to take people's docks away. So, I mean, if we haven't exhausted those options yet, I'd rather look at doing something like that where we don't actually impact people that already have docks before I made the decision the other way.
Thank you for that. Mr. Todd, did you want to weigh in on that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure the council is not confused. We have no intention of taking anybody's dock away. This would only occur when somebody was selling their property. And on that sale, there was an opportunity for us to acquire the dock on that sale. So the leases are renewed by O P G on a regular basis. And that would be the opportunity where we would utilize that opportunity, but only on a sale. We would have no intention of approaching people that are living there and tend to live there. And that was the approach that Mr. Nickel was suggesting.
It would even affect the sale of the property for the ones who own it. If they said, oh, you don't have access to the dock or the O P G property, that would reduce the cost for them that they wouldn't be selling it.
Okay, I've got Counselor Carrio, Ianone, and then we'll see who's next, and then Dobrowski.
Thank you, Your Worship. I don't know whether or not that's an issue for us to weigh in on, because they don't own that land anyway. It's all O P G land. But I think that the staff has a good idea. The boat ramp and our boat dock down there, I'm very familiar with it. I have all kinds of friends that use it, and I know a lot of the people that live there. They complain steady all summer that it's too busy. I, even if we want to get involved in looking for another place to develop some waterfront for our residents, I don't think I would agree with expanding that one. That's too busy. People complain if you go down there, there's people parked five deep trying to get in and out of the ramp. I like the idea that staff has of maybe in the future, developing another piece of waterfront, maybe for people who don't have big boats, maybe for people who have canoes, kayaks, small watercraft. But I like Counselor Peter Angelo's idea. There's much, there's a lot of other land on the waterway that I think we should get staff to investigate where we might be able to do something in the future, maybe get it set aside for us and may have, maybe have that be something we look at in the future. Great idea. We don't have enough waterfront property. You know, the Parks Commission eliminated that Kingsbridge area where we used to be able to use that park, and we lost that. It was a great place to swim, a great place to boat in that little area. So I believe in expanding our opportunities with waterway recreation for our residents. But I think we should get staff, like Counselor Peter Angelo said, focusing on another piece somewhere else, maybe where it doesn't impact the residents so much. So I'm going to vote for support this motion to let this go. But I still think that we should get staff to look at another piece of the creek or another piece of the waterway where maybe we could come up with some nice development. Maybe if, if we ever get anybody to build on again in the tourist area, maybe we could take some of that section, whatever, money and have it allocated towards something like that or whatever. But I would prefer to do that rather than expand the property where we already have the boat dock.
Yeah, so Section 37 grant, and also, so maybe we'll just, why don't we amend this? Oh, we get to it. Why don't we amend this and include it and ask staff to explore, investigate some other boat ramp, boat launch opportunities along the creek?
So maybe we'll get. If they move a secondary one, when they cancel this one, want to move that one, otherwise I'll move that one. Thank you.
Sounds good. Counselor Ianone.
I just want residents who are worried that we were looking at, at taking their docks away, not renewing their licenses, that's not what this, that's not what this application means. And I understood that when I read it. We often get people, we often have developments where people come and say, why don't they build this on another piece? Why don't they, oh, there's property over here. They can build something over there, but they don't own that property. Is there another piece of waterfront that we can't? Because prior to my speaking, everybody said, no way, we're not touching those leases. And I understand, I was here, I remember when, I remember when that all happened. So where would we look? Is there, is there other space? Is there other waterfront docks, dock areas that we could look at? Because staff's whole point here is that we have more public space for people to be able to go on. If anybody goes down to those docks, it says, private, do not come on here. And most people who are visiting us don't understand that people lease that, that they've paid for that. They just think it's something that they just can't go on. So there's water, public waterfront that they're not allowed to go on. Where's another piece that we could do?
Okay, well, I've got the C O here, Mr. Todd, so maybe you can help us on that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I could just make a suggestion, perhaps this could, could help, is that the Recreation Department, through Kathy Maldenhauer, they're just now completing, putting the final public consultation stuff on the update to the Recreation and Parks Master Plan. This may be a good opportunity, before that gets back to council, to look at as part of that document where we may be able to identify lands along the creek somewhere where we could expand an existing park. I think there's a couple of locations we could identify, but it might be very timely with the fact that looking at some trail improvements as well. I know there's going to be some trail improvements. looking at some trail improvements uh as well. I know there's gonna be some trail improvements coming along the creek itself. There may be an opportunity to build more dock and uh little park uh as part of that. So it's timely if, if, if that. I guess the referral is to have us look. If I could suggest to council that we try to incorporate some of those thoughts into the Parks and Rec Master Plan update when it comes back. And it'll be there for council to uh review as part of that document.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a great idea, but I have one more question. I, if I'm counting this right, I see six docks. Um, Counselor Thompson said, you know, how do we have this conversation without including the people who've leased those docks? How did it get to us without those six people being notified? Cause that's six households. How is it it got to us without six households being notified that we might perhaps do that tonight?
Mr. Nickel?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just to answer that question, OPG is the license holder with the private residences. So a private residence contacted OPG about a pending sale. And uh OPG felt it would be appropriate to see if the city had any opinion on um those docks that uh are attached to our licensed land.
Did any of those other, did any of those other docks, other than the property that's selling, um did they get notification? We were having this discussion?
Do you, Mr. Mayor? No, this came up uh late last week. And uh it is only relevant to this property that's for sale and, and OPG is looking for an answer, but at the end of the day, it's their license and, and they don't need to take our advice. They'll act how they see fit, but they wanted to, to hear from us in our opinions.
Well, I, and I understand that. I'm, I just want to say that Counselor Thompson's comments were correct. While it's OPG's decision, the residents who own the leased those stocks are, are looking at it tonight as if it's in council's decision to say, no, they can no longer really uh renew those. So I, I think next time something like this comes to us, perhaps they should be notified also.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. I've got uh working my way through. I've got Chris, uh Counselor Dubrowski, Counselor Peter Angelo, Counselor Campbell.
Yeah, I think everybody's covered the, the questions that I had. Um, I have nothing more to add. I, I wouldn't support it. And there was some confusion with the report. I think that's where this conversation is arising from. So hopefully the residents like Counselor Ianone mentioned uh are too worried and knowing that their, their leased land is safe.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Actually, Worship, I'm good. I mean, I think uh, you, you know, the comment was made, is there any other land? I think there's a lot on the north side. Um, council needs to remember that we still have George Buchanan Park, which is from Stanley Avenue all the way east, I think, until uh the water intake. And, and you know, in the past, I think it was maybe five years. Um, we just uh, uh, we just helped the roaming club build out there. So there is the ability to, to put lots of boats in the water out there, Your Worship. It's all public land. It's all owned by the city. Uh, further to that, if you go from Stanley Avenue all the way east again to Low Lift, I don't believe that there's anything there right now, and that's OPG land. Uh, I'm not sure about the width of that, but that's something that perhaps staff can investigate. But I do think that there's opportunity elsewhere, Your Worship.
I was thinking the exact same thing about George Buchanan down by the Humane Society. There's some, that's where a lot of people take their dogs and they uh go down in the creek there. It's a great area. So.
And we built the trail there as well.
Yep, exactly. Okay, uh, we've got uh Counselor Campbell.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. This has been a really good discussion. And I'm not prepared to make a decision one way or the other. I would prefer to table this motion until we get a report back from the staff that covers the conversation and the options that we have provided up to this point.
Okay.
So I, my motion stands and I like uh the C A O's uh recommendation regarding the recreation uh policy and uh report back.
Okay, okay. Well, we've got a, is there any other discussion to the motion? Okay, so we, Counselor Strange?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. And I'm just thinking, I know last year was, was a, a, a big year when people, I don't know if you ever go down there, but people just love to get their floaties. And they'll float down there for miles from one end to the other. So if we're looking at something like Counselor Peter Angelo is talking about, maybe we can look at something where there's safe access to some of these people where they can actually just go into water as well and, and make it a little safer for them as well. So we can um help them as well.
That's great. Okay. Well, we've got a, yes, Counselor Campbell.
There is a motion on the floor with respect to uh um with respect to not moving forward.
Yeah, not moving forward, but then uh asking.
Make, I made a motion to uh to, oh dear.
A deferral, deferral?
A deferral. And I have a report back from staff with respect to the discussions we've had. I, I don't think it's, it's not important we make a decision tonight.
Well, I think Wayne Thompson already made a motion.
Well, he did. So, yeah, so motion for deferral takes precedence.
Takes precedence. Motion first.
So uh no, motion for deferral takes precedence, but we need a second, it does. Uh, but we need a second to that motion. Is there a second to the motion? Last time, is there a second to that motion? Okay, so that motion fails and we go back to Counselor Thompson's motion. And the motion was to turn down the recommendation. And secondly, if I've got it straight, to ask staff to come back with other options along the creek for, for further boat ramps and launches. Is that right? Okay, so that's the motion by Counselor Thompson and seconded by, I forget who seconded it. Who seconded?
Counselor Strange.
Strange.
Counselor Strange. Okay, sorry. Okay. Did we have any speakers to that motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, uh opposed? For or against Counselor Ianone?
For.
Okay. Okay, so that, that passes. Thank you for that. Um.
Thank you.
Moving on to seven point six, revision to corporate procedure. Representation at L P A D hearings for the Committee of Adjustment, Adjustment. Uh, there's a recommendation in your reports. What's the will of council? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Just to very quickly explain the report. So sometimes what happens at council is planning staff will make a recommendation to council. But city council will uh choose to go the other way. Um, the same thing will happen not as often at Committee of Adjustments, but it will happen every once in a while. And what happens at city council if we don't support planning recommendations is that we have the ability to at least go out and find someone to argue on our behalf. And so it was brought up at Committee of Adjustments that we should have that ability as well. Otherwise, if we make a decision that's contrary to staff's recommendation, we have absolutely no representation at L P A D. So that's what this report is, is just simply saying, let's, let's level the playing field. And you know, if like council is able to have representation. So it's only fair that the Committee of Adjustments is able to have representation as well. So I would so move the report, Your Worship.
Second the motion.
Okay, motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Is there any discussion to that motion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Uh, item seven point seven, it's the WeGo Visitor Transportation Services Overview, Operational Overview. And there are three recommendations. The first is that it be received and approved. Secondly, that the recommendations not including budgetary approval uh or public input at this time be endorsed. And lastly, the council directs staff to bring an extension agreement forward to coun, for council's approval. That's the three main recommendations for the WeGo. Counselor Thompson? Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski. Do we have any discussion to the recommendations? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Okay, now onto the consent agenda. What is the will of council?
So move.
Motion by Counselor Thompson that we move the consent agenda, seconded by Counselor Campbell. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. So we go back down to, now reports. So we go down to item nine point three. That's the Diversity Inclusion Advisory Committee. And there is a recommendation that council appoint the three additional members to the committee. Uh, the members.
So.
Okay, so it's motion by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Strange. Is there any discussion to this motion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Item nine point four, a five G installation memo from our finance department with questions to, uh answers to our questions from our insurance company with a recommendation that we received. Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you to the staff for getting that information from our insurance company. Um, I know I'm the one that brought up the questions. There were a lot of residents uh that were, were wondering what our liability would be. Um, to, to me, when I read the memo, it's typical insurance speak and I don't know um if I was a homeowner, if I would feel um, if I would feel comfortable with the responses. I know it's typical insurance lingo. Um, I just don't know if the city should feel comfortable with that wording. Um, I know that there'll be, there doesn't need to be any discussion on it, but i- it's not very comforting in the wording to say that um we would be covered if, if there was uh an issue brought forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I need a motion to receive the information that we received.
Received.
Moved by Counselor LaCoco, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Uh, item nine point five is the Niagara Regional Housing Fourth Quarter Report.
Move the recommendation, Your Worship.
Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor LaCoco that we receive the report. All those in favor? And that's approved. Thank you. Unanimous. Uh, Counselor Peter Angelo's report, nine point six, letter from the Ministry of Transportation regarding Highway four oh five and the Q E W interchange. Uh, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Um, I guess I'm wondering uh, you know, what our next steps would be like I. I do appreciate the fact that the uh province and the ministry are putting money into uh the Glendale intersection. Um, I think there's an article actually in the paper today that talks about their investment, which is almost fifty-four million dollars, which is very significant. Um, I still tend to think that it would be uh, I guess, the ultimate solution to uh, to have the, you know, have the two highways fully connected. Uh, so I'm wondering, I guess, through you to staff if there's any ways that we can continue to bring this forward, even get it to the possibility of uh an environmental assessment so that the ministry can uh, I guess, consider making the two highways fully functional.
Good point. Uh, Mr. Nickel, uh, oh, look at that. He's already ahead of me. Did you, did you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so we did have a few follow-up discussions with um the ministry staff. Um, what they've indicated is that there, there was never any consideration for this type of interchange when they, they completed their golden horseshoe uh transportation planning. But they, they left the door open by saying that there could be potential opportunities in the next iterations of those plans. Um, so that is really, what I heard was there may be a long-term solution that could include a full all-moves interchange here. Uh, but what we stress with them is that we really want them to consider the short-term solutions that may be able to bide us some time until this can be flushed out a bit more in more detail. Um, it's, it's a very big undertaking. It would be very expensive for them to commit to. So I, I it's unlikely, in my opinion, that they would commit to an E A now without doing the, the transportation need studies to see if it actually is a, a, something that can be warranted from their perspective. So where we think we're headed is uh, is to work on some signage strategies and even signage strategies that might involve travelers heading from the U S. So that before they even consider which bridge they want to cross, they consider their destination. And they consider a destination that is, is easier for them to make, you know, to make that movement. Um, and uh, and also some, some routing destiny, routing signage that's in the city, through the city, at our off-ramps at Stanley Avenue. Um, and, and some of the new interchanges like they're proposing at the concession six Mewburn Road location, um, which may still be a few years down the road. Um, their, their report suggests that it will be easier to get off the highway at Glendale and turn back around. Um, yet I still think that's not a natural instinct for someone who's traveling, especially someone who's coming from a different part of the country or a different state, uh, who wants to head to a major destination like Niagara Falls. So we'll continue a few discussions, but I, I would press them on uh trying to get this as a consideration or at least an option they can model in their longer-term uh growth strategies here in Niagara Region.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Your Worship. I, 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 I really do. Um, I think it's important that staff continues to uh, you know, kind of nudge that idea forward. Uh, you know, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of heavy vehicles that end up using either Mountain Road or York Road. Uh, when they're coming down the Queen Elizabeth Way, they'll get off on Mountain Road and they'll go right through the entire city. Uh, instead of actually just, you know, continuing on the Queen Elizabeth Way and then veering to the right and going straight onto the four oh five. Um, you know, and same thing coming the other way from the four oh five. Especially in regards to the fact that uh there's a lot of industrial land at the corner of Stanley and the four oh five, and that's where a lot of the heavy trucks are heading. So uh for us as a municipality, I think it would be good to get all those heavy vehicles off of our roads. And just to keep up on the infrastructure that's already being built or that's already built right now. So um, I guess I'll leave it in Mr. Nickel's hands for now and I appreciate him continuing on with the fight.
That's great. Thanks, Counselor Peter Angelo, and thank you, Mr. Nickel. So Counselor Peter Angelo, did you want to make the motion to receive the, the letter?
I will, Your Worship, yeah.
From uh Ms. Mulrooney, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved unanimously. Thank you for that. And item nine point seven, proclamation request that the week of March twenty-eighth through April the third be proclaimed as National Cleaning Week.
I'll move the proclamation, Your Worship.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Kerrio. All those in favor? Just kind of funny because COVID, you know, that's, we do a lot of cleaning, it seems these days. So that's interesting.
It's been cleaning year.
Yeah, it's been a year of cleaning. You're right. Uh, okay, resolution. Um, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Clerk, I'm not sure I understand. Is this an in-camera resolution?
On the twenty-second.
Yes, so this is uh a resolution that's being brought forward in advance uh of a meeting that uh staff is hoping to hold uh with council on March twenty-second. So that'll be prior to the March twenty-third council meeting. Uh, it would be considered in camera under the Act uh for the reasons of being uh a personal matter. Uh, essentially what this is for is so that all of council can gather and uh participate in the C A O recruitment. Um, we knew that uh this, this stage was coming, as mentioned earlier this evening, that all of council would be involved in this process. Uh, so it'll be done as an in-camera meeting, as allowed under the Act. And essentially what this is, is a special meeting of council. Uh, since we're not gathering again betwe, between now and the twenty-second, when this will be held, uh, I thought we would conclude the resolution on tonight's agenda for approval.
Okay, there we go. Okay, no, that's great. So looking for a motion uh to approve, uh motion by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski that we approve the resolution that go in camera on March twenty-second for our C A O personnel uh meeting. Um, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Uh, ratification of in-camera, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Your Worship, uh, council did meet in camera earlier this evening. Um, there's a motion now for ratification of in-camera that the proposed sale of sitting on land being part of road allowance between concession one and Broken Front concession, Mc River, north side of Weaver Road, parts one and two on reference plan fifty-nine R one, six, two, one, seven, be sold for the acceptable offer of three thousand dollars plus H S T for each of part one and part two. Uh, and then secondly, uh, the other matter, there was just direction to staff uh to pursue uh with the gunning and mirrors pump station replacement contract.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, motion by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski uh that the um in-camera ratification motion take place. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that.
One, Your Worship.
What, what was that? Sorry, Counselor Kerrio?
Conflict on the one. I had a conflict on the one. So it's not unanimous.
So it's not unanimous. I had a conflict.
Okay, right, with a noted conflict from, uh, Counselor Carrio, that's right, thank you. Uh, the bylaws, Counselor Peter Angelo?
First, second and third, Your Worship.
Okay, we'll give the bylaws a first, second and third reading. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor LaCoco. Oh, you want to speak to it, Counselor LaCoco? Yes?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, um, bylaw dash twenty twenty one dash thirty two, that was the administrative penalties for stopping and standing. Um, I voted against the report, so I'll vote against the, the bylaw as well.
Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, did you want to weigh in on that?
Uh, thank you, Counselor LaCoco, for, uh, just bringing that up. Uh, the reason that this bylaw is on the agenda is, uh, it was inadvertently passed at the last agenda. It should have been pulled after council, uh, defeated the motion to increase the fees. So tonight's, uh, bylaw is, you'll notice it's quite short, it's just a housekeeping matter to actually repeal that process. Uh, so effectively, uh, we're just going back to the old bylaw two thousand and fourteen sixty five. Uh, this is just to clean up, uh, a mistake, uh, administrative error that occurred at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mattson, then I guess I'm not opposed, I don't need it pulled. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Any other questions, comments? Okay, then we'll call the vote, all those in favor of the bylaws? Okay, that's approved, thank you, new business. Counselor LaCoco. And then Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a, um, a couple of them. One is regarding student volunteer hours. I've been contacted by many parents who have kids that need volunteer hours, but because of, um, the pandemic, a lot of organizations are closed. So they were wondering if, uh, the city could assist in maybe posting on our website the opportunities that are available, and maybe that will, um, encourage other people to make them available. It, the reality is, there's not a lot of volunteer hours, so I wanted to bring it up as discussion. Are there any other ideas that high school kids could get their hours in a safe way through the pandemic? Could we utilize the website to do posting? I, I just wanted to put it out there for discussion.
Okay, uh, that's great, that's great, that's, we'll figure something out there. Uh, Counselor Campbell, you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Your Worship, having, uh, been involved in the educational process, I think our best bet would be to have staff refer to those counselors that are looking for jobs for those students, so that it continues to be part of the educational process. And we don't have to worry about whether it's going to be acceptable or not acceptable. That all has to happen and go back to the counselors that are organizing this, the schools. So rather than putting it on our website, I'd like to make a motion that if there are jobs available, we make it known to those counselors that are working with these students.
You say jobs, you mean volunteer opportunities?
Volunteer opportunities, yes.
Uh, did you want to comment, Counselor LaCoco, before I, uh, go back to Counselor Dubrowski?
Yes, thanks, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was just wondering what Counselor, Counselor Campbell just said. Um, it's not that they're coming to me to look for jobs, and it's not that I have jobs to point them in the direction. They're, they're just expressing the challenges that they're having and would like some, um, guidance about how they could find hours and the easiest way, rather than maybe all nine of us talking with individual parents, maybe it would be a, a central place where they could go to look for hours or if, um, anybody has ideas about how people could volunteer to get those hours. I'm not sure if all nine of us going out there and, and, and trying to assist different people would be the best use of our time.
Our, uh, C A, our C A O might have an answer for us, Mr. Todd.
Well, not an answer, Mr. Mayor, but a suggestion. Uh, with all due respect, having us trying to provide hours is as difficult as anybody else just because we're in the same COVID restrictions as everybody else. You know, one suggestion may be that perhaps through the Ministry of Education, they should be looking at restructuring their volunteer hours due to COVID. Basically do a reduction because there hasn't been the opportunity. So perhaps that's the way to tackle this, is just have the ministry reduce that requirement for students so that they can reduce the number of volunteer hours that they have to get. And perhaps this council, if they do a motion of that effect, Mr. Mayor, if they so desired.
Actually, good idea.
It is a good idea.
Yeah. Um, Counselor LaCoco, I don't know if, uh, if you'd want, maybe want to make a motion to that effect, that we reach out to the Ministry of Education and suggest that they remove that requirement for students to have their volunteer hours until COVID's over?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll put a motion forward, a two-part motion, one that we reach out to the Ministry uh, of Education to reduce the hours, and if city council knows of any, not that I was asking for, for City Hall to put volunteer hours out there, I was just saying if City Hall knows of any to put them on a website that people can be directed to, to go and find those opportunities, so a two-part motion.
Okay, do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Ianone. Okay, so we've got the motion on the floor. Uh, who'd like to speak to the motion, sorry, head speakers, Counselor Dubrowski?
Just one quick, uh, point, maybe, uh, to Counselor LaCoco, for you, um, contacting the A's across the city, who obviously, they'll have, um, ongoing contact with their, with their membership, but there might be businesses that are looking for volunteers, whether it be online or, or obviously in person will be a little more difficult, but definitely a challenge coming from an events background where a lot of these young volunteers do receive their volunteer hours, whether it be through the Queen Street B A or the Falls U B A with various events that they have happening in volunteer hours. So it's definitely a challenge, but that might be one way to, to start as well, but either way, I'll support the motion. And, and, and the children, if they're watching and listening right now, which they probably aren't, knowing that their volunteer hours might get diminished a little bit, um, they'll be smiling as well.
Well, I'm sure if I was in high school, I'd be watching these meetings.
Right?
Oh, yeah.
Until the bitter end.
Oh, yeah. Um, maybe, uh, Counselor Ianone's, uh, grandbaby would be watching to get to sleep. Maybe that would probably be a better use of, uh, the time. So we've got a motion by Counselor LaCoco, seconded by Counselor Campbell, that we, uh, both send, uh, a correspondence to the Ministry of Education, asking for them to consider reducing or eliminating the requirement for volunteer hours right now during COVID. And secondly, that any, um, volunteer opportunities that were available that we, uh, post it or share it, or what was that? I don't know how you ended the last part of the second motion.
Post, share, it, it doesn't matter, whatever we can do to assist.
Okay, so we could reach out to the schools, as Counselor Campbell recommends, and to the guidance counselors, who are the ones doing the placements. Okay, so that's the motion, uh, that's been seconded, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, that's great, unanimous, thank you for that. Anything else, Counselor LaCoco?
Yes, I just had a couple more items. In twenty eighteen, uh, Niagara, the city of Niagara Falls declared the city a bee city. I know that we renewed our agreement for twenty twenty one. The reason that cities are doing this is because it's getting harder and harder for bees to find food and to pollinate our flowers and fruits. It's proven if you leave your dandelions, um, for the bees, it helps them with providing food for them and it keeps them alive and then, uh, allows them to pollinate. I did speak with our Director of Municipal Works, um, Mr. Nickel, and he's told me that we do not use pesticides on any of our dandelions, that we do cut, we will be cutting them down, and the reason why we have to cut them down is if we let them grow, the grass gets too unorderly, and then it's hard to get the equipment in there, then there's tick issues. But I do want to encourage other people out there in their small lots or whatever, if it's something that you would consider about keeping the dandelions for a little bit longer than maybe you would have, it gives the bees an opportunity for pollination. And, um, I also wanted to mention that we do have the, um, pollination gardens at Fairview Cemetery and at Fireman's Park, so the city is, is working towards that as well. So there's no motion or anything, I just wanted to bring that up. Um, the next thing I had was, um, the next couple of them all have a common thread, and I think it's really important that we realize what our residents are going through, the difficulties that they're having. A lot of people are having difficulties in finding affordable housing, being able to, to, uh, afford affordable housing, or working two or three jobs to make ends meet. I, I'm just going to read a quick email that was sent to me, and it gives you an idea of the money that comes in to someone and the money that has to go out looking for, uh, an affordable home. Two thousand to twenty eight hundred plus bills is way too expensive for rent for a three-bedroom home. You are making it hard for anyone to rent. Young people, married people, single people and elderly people. People on O D S P or Ontario Works or even two-parent income can't afford to live anymore. Room for rent is now eight hundred to a thousand dollars. How can a single person afford that? Ontario Work, seven hundred and fifty dollars, O D S P is a thousand to eleven hundred. They also have to eat and survive. Some places are charging eight hundred and fifty dollars and two people per room, getting eight hundred dollar tiny room. A bachelor apartment is a thousand to twenty five hundred dollars. A one-bedroom apartment is twelve hundred to two thousand. Two bedrooms, fourteen hundred to twenty two hundred. Three bedrooms, twenty, two thousand to three thousand. All places require perfect credit, too. Let's say a mom and a dad with one kid needs a two-bedroom place, she works thirty-five hours a week, is a hundred, in four hundred and ninety a week before tax, times four, one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars a month, minus four hundred and sixty dollars in tax, more or less, is fifteen hundred dollars a month, or a single parent wanting to move to a bigger house and then they only make fifteen hundred a month. This is impossible for anyone to be able to move forward in life or afford a place to live. That's barely enough to cover rent. Then factor in if they need a child, childcare, school lunches, and if a place is plus hydro, heat and phone, cable, internet required for school and food for month, for one month. You can see how it's difficult for people to, to afford, and some people are blaming landlords that the landlords are charging too much, and I don't really want to, um, go that route because the landlords are charging what it is for the cost of a home and their mortgage, so they're going with what Marketplace is. Though I know this is a very complex issue, and it involves a lot of different levels of government and social programs, which include Canada Pension Plan, Oil Age Security, Ontario Works, Ontario Disability, economic drivers, current supply and demand of houses and sales, number of sales, houses for rent, vacation rental units, minimum wage, living wage, basic income. What can we do to help our residents? I know the region has provided some ser, some services. One resident asked if we could, just like we have a property tax and a water tax rebate, one person was asking for a persons with disabilities, could we possibly look at a rebate for that? So I would like to put that motion forward to see if our staff could look into what the ramifications, financial implications would be to put out a, uh, tax, uh, and water rebate for people with disabilities. And I was hoping that we could get a second for that, for our, our staff to look into that.
Okay, so motion by Counselor LaCoco, asking for, uh, tax and water rebate report for people with disabilities? And that may end up looking, yep, seconded by Counselor Ianone, and that could potentially look similar to what we have for the seniors right now, uh, for water and, and, um, uh, tax rebate for the increase. So we've got a motion, do we have any discussion to the motion to ask for a report back from staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that was unanimously supported?
Okay, I just have a little bit more. Thank you. Um, in our Niagara Regional Housing update that we had on our agenda today, it takes five to eighteen years to, to find something if you put on the regional housing list. So all of these things combined, it's very difficult for people to make, uh, to make ends meet. I know there's no easy answers, and I'm really not sure what we can do at the municipal level. A lot of our services are at the region level, but I do want our residents to understand that we do understand some of the challenges that they're going through. And I, I'd like to put it out there so that we could think about what can we do to assist people. I don't want to just say, oh, it's another level of government. I really want to do something to assist our residents and understand their struggles. Um, so I, I, I'd like to put it out to all of the counselors, maybe for the next meeting, if you could think about some ideas that we could possibly bring forward. I don't expect some answers today, but I just wanted to put a bug in everyone's ear. And the last item that I have, um, i- is regarding this as well. In twenty nineteen, staff prepared a report on the Ontario Living Wage Initiative. We received and filed it. With the state of the economy, the pandemic and many other municipalities committing to a li, a li, living wage employer, I would like to move that we reconsider the motion to receive and file and have staff come back with the financial impact to commit to this initiative. There are other municipalities that are looking into this and have committed to it, and they've actually put a dollar amount. I know when I was speaking with A R, we've already accomplished two of the levels, but the, um, Niagara Poverty Reduction Network would like the city to commit to three levels. So before we move forward with that, I would like to reconsider that receive and file and, uh, look into it more, so our city of Niagara Falls could be considered a living, living wage employer.
I've got a motion by Counselor LaCoco, I've got Counselor Campbell, uh, seconding that, uh, that we ask staff to come back with reconsidering receiving and actually costing out what it would be to be, uh, fully living wage. I know City of St. Catherine's done that recently as well, and come back with the numbers, uh, to reflect that. So is there any discussion from, uh, Counselor Carrio?
Thank you, Your Worship, I'll support the motion, but I think that the staff has a lot of work to do on this. Not only what it would take to, uh, have a living wage, but I think that they'd have to go into the, um, uh, commercial sector of our, our municipality and also find out the ability to pay. There's no use as council, uh, putting something forward that, at this particular time, there's no businesses that could afford to pay it anyways, unless you're just talking strictly about, um, uh, public sector workers, which don't seem to have any, any limit or whatever. But I think that, that the, uh, the work that the staff needs to do would also be to look into, uh, the ability of our industries, all industry, to be able to pay more money than they're paying now. Uh, so I think that would have to be included as part of the motion. I think they'd have to do an in-depth study, not just on what it should be, what the number should be, but the ability of us to be able to get people to pay it.
Yep, Counselor LaCoco, you want to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I was talking about was the city of Niagara Falls being a living wage employer, that we would pay all of our, uh, full-time employees, part-time employees and our third-party contracts. Once the city becomes a living wage employer, we can encourage other businesses to become a living wage employer if they would like to be, but that's not, not what this motion is. This is just about the city of Niagara Falls paying our employees and our contractors a living wage.
Well, then I still think we'd have to look at contractors and find out the effect that it would have on them.
Yes, and that's what H R would do, and that's what the city of St. Catherine's just did. If I remember correctly, it was five hundred and fifty thousand or five hundred and eighty thousand over the course of a few years to get them to that level. So that's why, um, in, in speaking with our H R director, he wanted to speak to them to find out how did they come up with that number? How many contractors did they reach, um, to, to find that information out?
Yeah, and you, you know that ultimately, there's only one person that pays for this, is the taxpayers, the city. Because whatever that is, the, the contractors or whoever are doing the work for the city don't pay for it. They pass it on to the contracts that they get, and they ultimately, the city would ultimately pay for it. But I'm okay with it.
Okay, so and it's just a report, right? We're just looking to get a report, so no, fair, fair comment and, uh, uh, fair, fair motion. Is there any other discussion to the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that was supported unanimously as well. Any other ones, Counselor LaCoco?
No, that's it, I'm done for the evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Peter Angelo, then Carrio.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship, and I have a couple items as well. Uh, the first is I wanted to make the motion to ask staff to bring back a report that would outline options that council could consider, that would focus on ways that we could do some team building, Your Worship, uh, to improve cohesion and distancing. There's obviously been some changes, Your Worship, in how we interact. And in terms of moving forward, I really think that we need to look at where we are, uh, and where we're headed. And now is a, is as good a time as any. I know in the past that council has usually done these at the beginning of the term, but given the landscape, Your Worship, I really don't think it's a bad idea. So, uh, I think if we allow staff to write a report, then council can at least consider some options and then decide how we want to move forward, so that would be my motion, Your Worship.
Okay, I think, uh, fair, it's fair. I got, uh, Counselor Carrio, are you seconding that, Counselor Carrio?
Yes, and I probably would like to make a comment to You Worship.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, I second the motion, I think it's a good idea. I, I remember the different, um, uh, presentations that we've had in the past. They included, you know, um, governance, um, code of conduct, conflicts, um, all kinds of different things. It would, it wouldn't be a bad time to have one, Your Worship. Uh, they were very useful to us, and I think it did help, and it, it did, uh, make the things go better. So I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you for that. I've got Counselor Ianone and Strange.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, can you clarify that councillor Peter Angelo? Cause I'm pretty sure that councillor Loco. Asked us to do this. Um, she called it sensitivity training or or. I think it was right after the newspaper article that we needed to have some sort of mediation or sensitivity training or. Um, be able to sit down and hash things out. Is that what you're talking about?
I think I'm asking uh staff simply to come back with a report that would give council some options and then council can discuss those options and make a decision to move forward if they so wish.
I'll support that. I supported it when councillor Loco asked for it.
Okay, councillor Strange.
I I was just gonna support the motion.
Okay, okay. Is there any other discussion to the motion? Well, I think it's a good idea. You know, COVID's been difficult on everyone and it hasn't always brought out the best in people. I hear this time and time again. People are, what's wrong with people? What's going on with society? Everybody's barking at each other. Everybody's gotten so, and it's tough because it's this continuous stress. This continuous anxiety and some of the, I I can't tell you, some of the mental health stories that I've heard have been so saddening. I mean, I have parents tell me about the struggles their kids are going through. I I it's been, it's been hard. It's been very, very difficult for everybody. So if there's ever a time, I mean, we're kind of hopefully coming through a reset, uh coming out of this COVID. It's been a year. It's been, uh, it's not been an easy year, I'll tell you that. So, and I can tell you, I reached out, uh, I stay in touch with lots of mayors all over. And Mayor Krantz in Milton, he's the longest-serving mayor in Canada. And and I asked him, I said, you've been through a lot, you've been over forty years, like, how is this compared to some of the other challenges? And he said, nothing even remotely compares to COVID, not even close. So uh there's someone who's been mayor for forty years. So anyway, I I think it's a it's a good motion, councillor. So you've heard the motions, it's seconded by councillor Kerrio. Uh, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that.
I know, right, your worship? Yeah, so I know that last meeting, um Fernwood Park was brought up and the possibility of an ice rink out there. Uh, following the meeting, council did receive an email. Uh, from one of our staff members who said that they were gonna go out to the park and meet some of the residents. Um, and discuss the possibility of an ice rink. I went out there, your worship, um, and I met with staff and whatever residents showed up. And since then, I've been communicating a bunch with uh with Mr. Nickel. And I think that we have sort of, I guess, a a game plan to to move forward and. I think if it works, your worship, Mr. Nickel is 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 very open as well to um kind of adopting it in other parks as well. Uh, so step one, your worship, would be to uh have city staff go out in the springtime and test the soil. Because um testing the soil is important to make sure that it will retain water. There's no sense in putting water in the soil if the water is simply gonna go through, uh then the ice rink will never form. So first of all, we need to make sure that the soil that we have is water-resistant. W- once we know that the soil is good to hold the water, uh then have a little bit of a public meeting and ask the residents if they want to take ownership of the. Ice rink and if they're in favor of having one there. If they're in favor of having one there, your worship, then it becomes very easy because according to Mr. Nickel. It would simply be just designing it and then having city forces go out and construct or I guess make that depression. In the ground so that it can hold water. And then what they do, your worship, is they put a little bit of a a funnel with a plug in there. So that um, you know, when they don't want the water to pool in there, they simply open up the plug and then when it's time to make the ice rink. All they do is they put the plug in and then they can fill it up with water and then the water will freeze and they'll have their ice rink. So, your worship, I'd like to make a motion that um, you know, we. At at least start with step number one for Fernwood, which is test the soil in the springtime. And if the soil will retain water, then we move forward with a public meeting for the neighborhood to see if they want that ice rink. If they want that ice rink, then we move forward to design and then implementation phase, your worship. And I would open it up as well to people in other parks who are who really want some type of outdoor amenity like an ice rink. You know, to contact either yourself or really any council member, you know, to see if we can start the process in their park as well. So that would be my motion, your worship.
Okay, thank you for that. Motion by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Campbell. That we have staff go through the process at Fernwood Park of hopefully uh coming up with an ice rink plan. For uh next winter. Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah.
So uh, sounds good. And you're right, with so much sandy loam in Niagara Falls, you gotta get the right soil conditions or. It's basically sand, you know, and it won't hold the water. So uh, if there's no further comments on that topic, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Any other?
That's all for tonight, your worship. I I have others, but I'll save them for next meeting.
Oh, you're very kind. Thank you. Uh councillor Kerrio, then Thompson?
Thank you, worship. I was just gonna uh ask for an update on photo radar. I saw the mayor of Toronto. On TV uh this week talking about what a cash cow it was for the city and he said in one session. In one area, there was one person that got fifteen tickets in one month, same person. So it's just a huge amount of huge moneymaker. We're looking for revenue generating things. That do, you know, this does two things, would slow people down in areas where we were fighting before with things that people don't even want. Like speed bumps and all those types of things. I think this would stop speeders quickly. Or give us money to put speed bumps everywhere.
Yep, I just want to.
And then I see is we've got that motion uh at the re- the region where it's a fifty fifty share after expenses. Uh, as these cameras come rolling out. So I don't know if um uh Mr. Nichols got an update on where they're at with that?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I know the region's main push at this point is to look at red light cameras at a few of the the uh high collision intersections. And then I'll follow up with the second phase of their uh Vision Zero program, which is automated speed enforcement, the um speed cameras. So what I'd be happy to do is follow up with them and see if I can have them provide a report that I can bring back to this council. So you have an idea of some timelines, when they'll be implemented and where they're coming um in the region and specifically in Niagara Falls.
Thank you. I think it should be, it'd be interesting that they should be uh moving forward on things that make money without. Us having to raise our hands to do it. I think it's a lot better for our taxpayers if we could raise some money without raising taxes.
Do we uh, do we need a motion or anything to that affect that, Mr. Nickel? Or what's your uh uh, what's your preference on that?
I I'd be happy to to take this as direction to go and uh and get a a response from the region and report back either in a letter.
Your worship, I'll just let him run with it.
Awesome. Okay, great. Uh councillor Campbell on the same.
Yeah, I have a quick question. Would it only be regional roads if the region were to uh uh start this?
Mr. Nickel?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it's the intention of the region to start on regional roads. They want to pilot this and walk before they run. Um, but I don't think that there's any limit to keeping on regional roads if it's successful and the local municipalities. Uh, can entertain it on our municipal roads, just like a police officer enforces speeds in our municipal roads, this would have the same effect. So. Uh, I'll find more information out and have the region address that question, too.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for that. Okay, uh, anything else? Uh councillor Kerrio?
Oh, thank you, your worship.
Okay, great. Uh councillor Thompson?
Um, I have people asking me all the time um about the vaccine for the um virus. Uh, does the city involved with the location, the convention center, whatever? Can you give us a little update?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask um our CAO if he would jump in and and the chief, fire chief, you guys can give us an update on the city's participation in the vaccine plan.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh. To the councillor's question, yes, the city uh through the chief and uh through our EOC group, we've been very active in in working with the region on vaccine locations. Uh, there are going to be uh locations in Niagara Falls. There's gonna be uh press releases coming out on it very soon. Uh, details are just being finalized, uh but we can assure you that the residents of Niagara Falls will certainly have a very. Well-functioning uh vaccine site within our city.
Chief, did you want to add anything to that?
Oh, I I think uh, you know, the convention center was a great uh location. So I would make sure that that's available.
Yep, and uh and uh.
Just on that point?
Yes, it's on that point. Uh councillor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, just on that point, your worship. Um, I mean, I have heard a rumor. I I don't know uh what's true, what's not, but has the has the site been picked yet?
In Niagara Falls, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, um, the chief, I'll let the chief maybe, he's the best guy to weigh in on it. He knows more than I do.
To the council, um, so. About a month, month and a half ago, we had to submit uh sites to public health. For them to uh make a decision on whether they were adequate for the vaccine site. Public Health has um. Approved and is working on two different sites within our municipality and as um the CAO said, the announcement on the site that is going to be. Um, first to be up and running will be announced hopefully this week at some time. Unfortunately, right now it's still all confidential until we get all the paperwork completed.
That's fine, your worship. Thank you.
The 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 main thing is, the good thing is the chief's been working really hard um.
Yeah, and the good thing is it's coming, right?
I mean. It it's it's a hundred percent coming. And you you won't have to leave the city. We're gonna have a site and that'll be fully functional, very efficient, and you'll be able to get your vaccines, you know, as. Uh, the different groups are allowed to come forward. And we've got to see at the table because the chief's uh involved uh right at the source, so it's good. We've got a oar in the water on all this.
It's good. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Uh councillor Thompson, um, so you want to know about the vaccine? So that's your update so far. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, that's fine. I, you know, I listened to uh Trudeau. And he says, oh, we're gonna get the vaccine for everybody and uh probably uh at the end of September. You know, I thought, what the hell is that?
Well, the good news on Friday, they approved the Astral Zeneca uh vaccine for twenty million. Johnson and Johnson's uh. And one other are in the final stages of approval. We should know in the next couple of weeks. So that date, hopefully, is everything goes uh as planned, is gonna keep getting moved up closer and closer. So that we get everybody vaccinated. We gotta catch up. The the US is leaving us behind in the dust. So is UK, so is lots of countries and there's no excuse. We need to make sure. That we're getting our population vaccinated as soon as possible. So the good news is, like I said, here in. Uh Niagara Falls, we're gonna have a site fully functional and uh we'll have a good place for people to get their vaccines right here in town. Uh, any other new business? Councillor Dubrowski?
Yeah, we just need those vaccines hopefully sooner rather than later. Um, just quickly, there there's a few municipalities that I've. I've read online that have waived business fees or, sorry, business licensing fees for 2021. Wondering if we could get a a staff report back just with the financial implications if the city of Niagara Falls were to do that as well. Um, it wouldn't be for maybe all businesses, but I know hairstylists and and some food truck owners and some other businesses that are looking to roll back into uh. The economy this year. Um, hopefully sooner rather than later might might uh benefit from a a business license fee waiver. Just wondering if I can throw that motion out on the table.
So a motion by councillor Dubrowski uh that we ask staff to come back with a business license waiver um report. And financial implications and seconded by councillor Strange. Is there any discussion to that motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously. Thank you for that.
That's all I, that's all I have.
Any other new business? Motion for adjournment. Councillor uh Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Strange, all those in favor? Okay, thanks.
Was up first.
Okay.
Who's on second?
Yeah.